Half a day. Welcome to the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture. The committee is now called to order. Today is Monday, July 12, 2021. The time is 5:04 PM. In accordance with the open government law, notices for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on June 16, 23, 29, and July 2, 2021. The notice was also published in the Guam Daily Post on the 15th, 16th, 21st, and 29th of June, and again on the 2nd, 4th, and 9th of July, and in the Pacific Daily News on June 15, 2021. This is a hybrid public hearing, receiving in-person and Zoom testimony. We are respectfully asking that you please keep your testimony to five minutes. As of 4:00 PM, we have over 39 people signed up to testify today, and we would like to hear from everyone in the time we are allotted for this hearing. Allowing five minutes each for a panel of eight will require 65 minutes per panel times five panels, allowing two minutes each per senator for questions. This public hearing is intended to gather testimony as well as answer questions for the senators who will be making findings and ultimately deliberating on the bill. I know there are concerns about the time limit, however, the five-minute time limit is a standard courtesy request that we ask of all people testifying at hearings where the volume of people testifying is high. You can submit your full written testimonies to the committee. All testimony will be included in the committee report, which is a public document, and will be published. We have numerous written testimonies submitted and made available to all senators and the public via my website. Those will not be read tonight due to time constraints. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating your name for record-keeping purposes. We will hear testimony from individuals by order of sign-up with consideration for individuals who have requested special accommodations in compliance with Americans with Disabilities Act and those carried over from the last hearing. We kindly ask that after each panel is dismissed, that they kindly exit the Guam Congress Building so that those waiting outside the building to provide testimony can come in. There is a canopy and a speaker set up outside to continue to allow you to follow the hearing. Again, if you insist on exceeding the five-minute limit, we respectfully ask that you yield and allow us to place you on the last panel so that senators can stay as long as necessary to hear your testimony. I'd like to thank my colleagues for attending this evening's hearing and for the record, acknowledge their presence, beginning with Senator Talina Nelson, co-chair on the Committee on Justice, Senator Telo Taitewee, the chairperson of the subcommittee on medical malpractice, our vice, I mean, our legislative secretary, Amanda Shelton, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Joseph Augustine, Senator Jim Moylan, and Senator Sabina Perez, the vice chair of the Committee on Health. Senator Anthony Ada, Sitos Masi, senators. We have one agenda item tonight, and that is Bill Number 1112-36. And for the record, it's an act to add a new Chapter 10 to Division 1, Title 10, GCA, to add a new section 42A 101i20 to Chapter 42A of Division 3, Title 7, GCA, to amend Section 42A 101J of Chapter 42A, Division 3, Title 7, Guam Quote annotated, and to repeal Chapter 10 of Division 1, Title 10, GCA, all relative to medical malpractice in the territory of Guam. As prime sponsor of the bill, I will briefly introduce it. Bill 112 aims to solve one problem, that the costs of the current mandatory arbitration are cost prohibitive, preventing potentially legitimate claims from being filed. The United States District Court Judge Ramona Manglotia described it stating, quote, "It would be manifestly unfair to enforce the statutory requirement against a person financially incapable of arbitrating. Doing so would have the absurd result of prohibiting the poor from recovering on a claim they might be otherwise entitled to. It would likewise shield the healthcare industry from ever owing liability to the underprivileged." This graphic demonstrates the current law. If we can put the graphic up. Thank you. So this graphic compares the current law to Bill 112, and it's a general description, so it's, it's, it's general, it's not exact. But, so, the current law requires mandatory arbitration by a three-member panel, an attorney, a physician, and another. The costs include fees for these arbitrators at $450 plus an hour times three arbitrators. It's filing fees, if your claim is $1 million, are up to $10,000 paid by the claimant. The total cost of arbitration come up to between $40,000 and $60,000. This information we obtained from testimony in previous hearings in prior term, and again, testimony from the informational briefing the other night. Each side pays its own attorney, I mean, its expert witness fees and attorney's fees. Confidentiality is not mandated by the law, and the parties may pursue trial. Bill 112, under Bill 112, the parties may submit to arbitration or mediation. Arbitration would be pursuant to the Guam arbitration law, which allows parties to decide the number and the types of panel members, and thus to control the costs, and that would be subject to agreement of the parties, the cost. Again, each side pays its own attorney, its expert witness fees and attorney's fees. So you either go to arbitration or mediation, and these are confidential, the complaints are confidential through these processes. All right. If the parties don't agree to arbitration or mediation, they go to a pre-trial, according to the bill, they go to a pre-trial screening by a magistrate. Third panel, please. The magistrates are appointed by the chief justice, confirmed by the legislature after a public hearing. They are employed by the judiciary and governed under the judicial code of conduct. Estimated fees are $300. I'm estimating that based on current civil case filing fees. Each side pays, again, his own expert witness fees and attorney's fees. This process would remain confidential for 30 days after the magistrate judge's opinion or permanently if the trial is not pursued and the parties agree. Parties may pursue trial. Thank you. You can remove that. The bill does not remove the screening process meant to mitigate frivolous lawsuits. It does not allow for claims to go directly to court for claims made against healthcare providers. It does not contemplate or change what is considered malpractice under Guam's legal definition of standard of care. It does not make determinations on how doctors should practice medicine. This is already governed by Guam's laws. The magistrate's findings are not intended to be deemed civil judgments reportable to the National Practitioner Data Bank. They're described in the bill as "shall not be conclusive and can be refuted in trial." Bill 112 is not intended to attack our healthcare professionals. As I've said many times, this one particular issue has been ongoing, and we've been examining it since 2018. The bill is also not the answer to all the challenges that we face, but it is an effort to grant access to a chance for restorative justice to patients and families who do not have that chance currently. We will now accept testimony from those on the panel. As a reminder, please keep your testimony to five minutes. We will have a sign, I think, indicating when your five minutes is up. Those who insist on exceeding the five-minute time allotment, we respectfully ask that you yield and allow us to place you on the last panel so that senators can stay as long as necessary to hear your testimony. Senators, you will have two minutes each per panel to state your questions for the panel, to answer now or later, but within the two minutes or any other remarks. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of, I guess, I, did I miss any senator? Did I get them all? Okay, I think I got them all. Thank you again. The first person is Mr. Paul Cargan.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. You may proceed.
I support Bill 112 all the way because of what's happening to me at dialysis.
Okay, just a second, yeah. Let's make sure the microphone is, we need to hear.
I know it's, there's a lot of us to justify, so I just wanna try to keep it short because everything is written in black and white, and as of, I just finished my treatment today, and I'm still sick again from my head. My head is feeling cloudy. I pray together, it's gonna enable me to talk, to testify, and thanks that I find the energy and the things to justify. My chest now is very, very tight and feeling cold inside and back of my, back. I can feel my heart is kinda heavy today, it started during dialysis, and these people, my leg is going crazy on me, and when he got on the food, the talaas in the bagel is the one I'm eating, and I believe I'm still okay now. So, you know, there's something really wrong with these people at the dialysis center. I'm not talking about other dialysis centers, but specifically, I'm talking about the one in East Agonya. That's where I'm going to dialysis, and that's where I'm getting sick since, since the morning. And the day we transferred, I remember it's February 8th on a Monday, we moved to the new place, that's the day I didn't get sick, I didn't feel sick, and when I come out, I tell everybody, my daughter and my, my other friend over here, I'm gonna retire the, I'm gonna retire the wheelchair, so I walk out. And after the day until now, I'm, every single day, as a matter of fact right now, I'm still feeling the, what I'm, they've been trying to tell me, it's my brain because I got, I got the stroke. Because I got stroke, what, you know, GRMC treated me before, and that's perfect. I believe in dialysis, it changed me, because one time I tried at the GRMC, my things I heard about dialysis before, it got me, I don't believe that. Because every, that time I can turn myself on the wheel, and once it treats me, every day I go to dialysis, I feel stronger and getting better. And I work so hard to improve myself, I follow the diet, the medication, everything, and right now, they don't tell me about my cholesterol and things like that. They cut everything down, but I'm still following my, my, my primary doctor, I got two, that they told me, Paul, is this something very, you were able to reverse your diabetic?
Mr. Cargan, you have one minute left.
Okay.
Can you, yeah.
Okay.
Do you support the bill or not?
Yes.
Regarding medical arbitration?
I support the bill because of the attribution law and the Bill 112 is very good for Guam. It can, things that I see is, when this bill sign into law, the doctor will be able to, to, to work more closely with their patient, watch their nurse and every employee, and involve the patient's family to, more closer to, so they can make decisions to. It's my time is out.
Please conclude. Please finish.
That's why I wanna support Bill 112 or the attribution law. I'm asking you guys, our leaders of Guam, to please stand united and vote, vote yes for this law, so Guam can be a better place for all of us to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cargan, and thank you for waiting for last, last week's hearing for many hours, Sitos Masi. Next, we have Frankie James Meno.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody, for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of this bill. I, when this first started, I was very angry because of personal situation. I support the bill just based on the common sense. It's supposed to be, help people who are less fortunate, who cannot afford, first, the hospital bill, they gotta take care of, and everything, all the costs, and then that 40 to 60,000, who's, who has that? So, many, many claims don't settle or it just goes away. Credit where credit is due, some doctors here are very, they do handle their, their field of expertise very professional, and I personally, in 2018, was hospitalized at GRMC for a small puncture wound that diesel fuel managed to get in and gave me a high fever of 104, landed me at the hospital. No pus, it was healing, had started out, a pretty large wound, and by the time I went to GRMC, it ended up, I mean, it was small, and then they administered five IVs, three on one arm and two on the other arm, for what, I don't know, have five pages of those drugs, front and back. I'm diabetic, and I think most diabetic doctors would be appalled on the type of treatment that was administered to me as a diabetic. In one week, I could not pee, or there was no bowel movement in that week. On day one, I was 236 pounds. By the week, the end of the week, I was 305. During the entire time laying in that bed before the surgery, right before Christmas Eve, nobody cared. Nobody checked on me, they don't change dress, they didn't put any dressing. So, I don't know where, who dropped the ball, but they had doctors handling my case who had no business. Four doctors, one foot doctor, and I don't know what the other three were doing, but they were discussing matters, why these drugs are not working, and we should try these other drugs. These were words coming out of four doctors, okay? On the day of surgery, developed what's called AFib, when the heartbeat, top and bottom, are not in rhythm, can cause a stroke. Had none of those symptoms my whole life, swelling, I couldn't use the restroom, didn't have those trouble. I went in there because I was poisoned by diesel, and gave me a high fever and nearly killed me. The next day, I felt better, the swelling had gone down, they insisted that I treat to get an infection out, but they couldn't find any pus. I blame myself for taking, for staying there, I should have left. If I didn't leave that hospital, when I did, I wouldn't be here speaking about this bill today. And if any of you incumbents are conflicted, then you're not doing your job. This is the house of the people, and if you let these doctors bully you, then they have no class. How could they reduce themselves to that level and leverage or take all the sick people at ransom because they don't wanna, they don't want us to have an opportunity, shall anybody be entitled otherwise, okay? So no hate, I just think it's ridiculous that we have to argue on what's right or get bullied. So, I think they have no class. And then the other night, I was here, but it was too many people. One doctor, Bolli, said sometimes we perform procedures outside of the scope of training. That is the root of this problem, that some people get, die, some people die and didn't get the proper treatment. We must stop that, please. I, I feel that, that maybe this might not be the right step, but we have to make that step in order to make it right. So, I only ask that you guys, if this bill don't go through, make it mandatory, they have to purchase malpractice insurance, okay? And thank you very much, I'm sorry, I had a little upburst there, but, you know, thank you.
Sitos Masi, Mr. Meno. Next, we have Dr. George Macris.
Hello, can you hear me? Thank you, I'll try to be quick because I know you have a five-minute limit. For those of you, thank you for giving me the opportunity to submit testimony in favor of Bill 112. For those of you who don't, don't know me, I arrived in Guam in 1985 with the Navy, was GMH Medical Director, a member of the GBME, president of the Guam Medical Society, et cetera. I currently live in Florida, but I have spent the majority of my career, and up to maybe 2019, living in the Western Pacific. I'm no longer licensed on Guam due to politics, put some attachments towards that end, but I'm very familiar with healthcare in the region and interact with contacts in Guam, including physicians, almost daily. I've always carried malpractice insurance when necessary and available, including on Guam, and like most doctors, try to do the right thing for their patients and keep current. I'm not looking over my shoulders. Like most doctors, a vast majority of providers on Guam attempt to practice within the, within the standards. They did not come to Guam because of the MMMAA, at least I know nobody who's done that, and maybe they're attempting to rewrite history. However, it's unlikely they have a real intention of actually leaving because of the bill, and if they leave, it'll be for other reasons. I checked around, and probably 50% of clinics already have malpractice insurance, so I don't know that that's gonna be an issue. However, as I, I see the provider response possibly due to groupthink, possibly due to ignorance of the, of the law, but I do think that this small claims court option has a potential to be problematic. So anyway, I'll kind of rush, clip down some areas. Having studied the problem for some time, you know I'm in support of the bill, I just wanna suggest some possible solutions to actually impact malpractice, because this bill will only affect the consequences of malpractice. For one thing, Bill, the bill won't fix the GMHA problem of institutionalized malpractice. It basically still keeps the Government Claims Act. So, as of my latest contacts, what I'm getting is what's been pervasive there. Due to a climate of fear, GMH staff are disinclined to expose unsafe providers, practices, and policies. And doctor caucuses, especially employee physicians, can make decisions based on politics and money without following rules of evidence. They can conduct sham reviews, they can invent violations, and basically threaten the employment and privileges of whistleblowers who try to expose unsafe practices. What disturbed me the most is that, what I was told is that threatened or settled malpractice cases, including deaths, like the Lebovsky case, may never get peer reviewed, and the matter just disappears. It's kind of like the providers who are involved, they kind of use the line of pending litigation, the case disappears, and there's no corrective action. So to shed light on the real problem, the law must, a law must be an, or change to protect doctors or healthcare providers, nurses and doctors. Peer review committee and licensing board adverse actions should not be enforceable until there's an evidentiary hearing and a judicial determination. Whistleblowers, if employees, whether private or government, by law should be paid on leave, should be on paid leave or allowed to practice. Again, people don't understand that these boards and the hospital committees that remove licenses and infect these, and impact people, do not need to use rules of evidence. They can use triple hearsay, they can even make up rules. So, putting it in front of a judge would probably be a higher standard.
Dr. Macris, you have one more minute. You have one more minute, please.
All right. So, in conclusion, it's irrational to, it's irrational to require a magistrate to be medically trained, where in other jurisdictions, they accept the findings of fact with respect to medicine, engineering, and environmental issues, and it's, you know, why would Guam be different? There are doctor-patient mandatory arbitration agreements in Florida, which need to become a law to become enforceable. You can do a, you can, by mutual consent, agree to arbitration prior to care. And in the case of fraud in other states, the statute of limitations to file a claim should be extended to seven years, which is the period upon which records can be destroyed. On Guam, adverse events are not caused by a lack of specialists or materials. And finally, when industries and professions ineffectively regulate themselves in a manner which creates hazards of health and public safety, unfortunately, lawyers and lawmakers need to get involved. Doctors who practice within standards should not overreact to this bill, but proposed medical malpractice reform should, at some point, be amended to include a statute of limitations for fraud and have reasonable ward caps eliminate, and eliminate the small claims court provision, which I believe may be counterproductive to the intent of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Macris. Next is Mr. Edward Lear. Did you give that to my staff in advance?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
It's on a flash drive.
Is that ready? All right, can we go on to Mr. Fusamanti, and we'll make sure that's ready? Is that ready, Tosh? Oh, here it is. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Lear.
Thank you. My name is Ed Lear, I am a California attorney. I was brought out here from Los Angeles to share with you my perspective. I am somebody who has solved problems on behalf of the legal community and the medical community. on behalf of the legal community and the medical community for years, including helping to solve problems that are legal of nature in Guam. Currently, I sit as a chair of a Blue Ribbon Commission for the California State Bar to analyze the effectiveness of laws. And I think that might be my most interesting qualification to speak today. I also serve as an arbitrator and as a judge pro tem in Southern California. I've been hired by the Guam healthcare provider community to facilitate a solution. I was not hired to advocate a position. I'm here to provide perspective. Next slide, please. I reviewed in the work that I did, the legislative intent. And with that, I have no issue. I think that it's a worthy legislative intent. I think that everybody on all sides wants a fair and balanced solution for all parties involved. I also note that an objective and an intent is to prevent the filing of meritless claims. And I take great note in that, because I think that that serves all sides. Next slide, please. In my overview, I looked at the law, the new law, I'm sorry, the proposed law. And I was struck in particular by one thing. And that's that the process begins after the filing of a complaint. And I take issue with that because of the severe and profound consequence that that would have on medical care providers. So, essentially, what you're saying here is that the process starts with the filing of a medical malpractice claim in the court. That becomes a reportable event to a doctor. It is mandatory to report that to your insurer, and it's mandatory to, to report that to your licensing board. That is to the great detriment of any medical care provider on Guam. And I wanted to point that out. It's probably what jumped out at me most and was most problematic. I'm also troubled by the referral to the magistrate judge for pre-trial screening. In essence, what the proposed law is creating is two trials. And the magistrate judge is somebody who likely will not have medical training. And it's somebody who will likely need to adjudicate a matter with expert witnesses on both sides. So, in that regard, I don't see that there's any efficiency or effectiveness in the way that that rule is set up, with the magistrate judge being the first to review the case. I further note the comments from the Chief Justice, who indicates in his letter that there is not an ability for the court system to add a magis, a third magistrate justice at this point, or a third magistrate. And, and that that could take up to a year to implement, both in terms of training and in terms of the cost of adding a magistrate judge, especially in light of the backlog from the pandemic, and in particular, the backlog that was caused with respect to eviction cases. I further note that the magistrate judge has to decide the case after a review of testimony, medical records, x-rays, test results, and treatises. That's not an easy process. My experience with medical malpractice and observation is in the California courts. And I see almost uniformly that a medical malpractice case takes one to two years before it goes to trial. There is extensive discovery that includes medical records, includes expert witness testimony. And what I see this bill doing, like I said earlier, is creating two trials and not one. So that we would have the magistrate process that would essentially demand the entire panoply of the discovery that you would have in a regular malpractice case, and you would also have the expert witness expense that would be necessary. Next slide, please. For our next slide? The magistrate judge, under the proposed new bill, would have to determine whether evidence supports malpractice, whether there is a material issue of fact, and whether the conduct was or was not a factor in the damages. That, that's essentially the job of any trial judge. So, my concern there, and this is the perspective that I'm hoping to add, is again, we are creating two trials and not one. So, instead of a more efficient system, we have exactly done the opposite. And what, what the proposed bill is doing is it's creating two trials, more cost, more time, and a greater burden to the plaintiff, to the victim. Which is the irony of all this, insofar as I look at the legislative intent and I look at the goal being to make this easier for the plaintiff-victim. And I think we've done just the opposite with the proposed bill. We've made it harder, insofar as there's virtually double the cost and an extended period of time before there's a final adjudication. I also note that there is a sealing of the decision for 30 days. And frankly, I don't understand the basis for that. The, insofar as a decision is made, it's what, it's a matter of public record. And I think that there's no value gained by sealing the magistrate judge's decision. I am going to continue to take some time until I complete. Thank you. Just like Mr. Keho did.
Thank you very much. We were told that you were going to take the place of another person who was going to testify, that you were going to read her testimony.
No, I will be finishing.
Mr. Lear, thank you. Let's, order, please, everybody, order. That's enough. We can, we can, you can, you can resume your presentation after all the panels. Thank you. I have the, all right. Mr., we were told that you were going to be reading Carla Haddock's testimony, and that you were taking her place, and we had made special accommodations for her because of the baby. And, but thank you very much. And we will, we will resume your testimony after the other panels. Thank you. Mr., Mr., can we get some order in here? Sergeant of Arms, please. Mr. Bustamante. Is this your doctor? Is this your doctor? Who has paid you to be here? I'm asking the doctors, who is paying this person? What is that? He said he is representing healthcare providers. I hope the healthcare providers can specify who he's representing. Next on the list, we have Mr. Bustamante, Alfredo Bustamante. Wait, please turn on your microphone and let's all calm down for a second. Thank you.
Good evenings, Chairwoman, Senator Terlachian, senators. I want to thank you for being here and for proposing this bill. I am the only person in Guam that went to an arbitration. And I want to tell you how it works. My dog was almost killed about seven years ago. And I pursue a law that is in place today. I am here to support this bill. It cost me $21,000 in arbitration fees. $40,000, and I have it here. $40,000 in experts and $20,000 in legal fees. And I won the malpractice. And guess what? They gave me $6,000 as an award. I understand this is for a dog. But if you have your son, your daughter, your father, your mother that is in this situation, it's going to cost you more money. So, I am here to testify on Bill 112 in favor. My name is Alfredo Bustamante, an Army veteran, a special forces soldier, and a businessman that have resided in Guam for the last 16 years. Three of my six kids were born in Guam. This is my home. I own a business, which I have insurance. It's called Errors and Omissions. That protects my realtors or myself as a broker for any liability, any compensatory damages, and any punitive damages that I may cause. What I see here is that we're having a problem about money. They don't care about the people of Guam. You know that. I am surprised that we have four senators that are now supporting this bill. And trust me, that's shameful. You know who you are. I cannot comprehend why the government of Guam has not tried to implement and pass a law that protect the people of Guam against malpractice and negligence, but instead protest the bad doctors and clinics that commit malpractice by not allowing the patients or the families of the deceased, injured, or incapacitated individuals to follow a lawsuit in a court of one. I have no sympathy whatsoever for people that are working to convince us that the cost of malpractice insurance is far greater than any human life or any altered human life due to medical malpractice or negligence. That's horrible, and we will not allow it. And I know you won't. It is immoral and unfair that these individuals, call it doctors, and listen to this, that went to school and endured a four-year undergraduate program, along with four years in medical school, and three to seven years in a residency program to learn their specialty. And they cannot be held accountable. 14 years of school. I went to school for six years to get my master's degree, and I can be taken to court and held accountable for my actions. Is that fair? No, definitely it's not fair. Any person that owns a company in Guam can be held accountable and be taken to court, except for the doctors. And you know what? They dealing with lives. The frivolous behavior and threats of leaving the island, like Dr. Shea, which, thank you, Dr. Shea, because you motivate me to be here today. Leaving the island on a bully and aggressive behavior, telling you senators that they are not going to vote for you. Being bully and threatening you. Guess what? Thank you, Senator Brown, for standing up the last hearing and saying, you don't need this. Thank you for that. Most people can afford an airplane ticket and accommodations in order to travel to Philippines or to the mainland to seek the proper service. I can. I don't go to GMH. I don't go to GMAC. I go to the Navy, or I go to Tripoli, or go to Hawaii. In other words, it takes between 10 to 14 years to become a fully licensed doctor. So, they should be highly skilled in their careers and jobs to prevent any negligence or wrongful death. However, one has allowed some doctors, which are now the majority, to be careless, as they know the consequences, which is none. How many people have died, and how many more people we will allow to die in Guam? How many malpractice cases has been reported? And how many cases have been gone to arbitration? Zero. I am the only one. People against malpractice or negligence, and that is why we get some of these doctors to come and practice in Guam. So, why these doctors should be, why these doctors should strive for excellence and training when there's no protection against negligence? What I am trying to say is, and I'm going to close with this. I have more faith in the judicial system than I have in any other people that do these arbitration panels from the states, because they don't know us. They don't know our culture. I am not here because of me, as my case is over. I settled. I won my case. And I was able to stand to this bully and unethical veterinarian. But I am here because it's the right thing to do. I am here, Senator Brown, I hear Senator Brown the last hearing indicate that she is not concerned with any threats given by the voters about her reelection. As a senator, I applaud you. I applaud your commitment, and I hope the other senators continue doing the same thing. Thank you for representing the people of Guam. Thank you for representing us, because we have no voice.
Thank you, Mr. Bustamante.
Sidoos Masih.
Sidoos Masih. Next, we will hear from Ms. Analin Lagrimas. Ms. Lagrimas?
Hello, I'm Analin, and I'm zooming in from California.
Ms. Lagrimas, can you put yourself on the video a little bit better? Thank you. That's fine. Thank you. Please proceed. Ms. Lagrimas, please proceed.
Yes. Bill 112 to restore the rights of our people. We cannot make a wrong right by doing another wrong. Forcefully taking the people's rights
Right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can we? Ms. Lagrimas, just a minute. There's something wrong with the audio. Can you hear me? Can you start again, please? All right?
Okay.
Audio, thank you.
I support Bill 112 to restore the rights of our people. We cannot make a wrong right by doing another wrong. Forcefully taking the people's rights to a civil trial is wrong, especially for specific claims such as malpractice. It discriminates against the vulnerable, the ones we should be advocating to protect the most, to protect their rights and to protect them from malpractice. If arbitration is really what is good for the people of Guam, should we force arbitration on every claim? That would be wrong. The civil courts were established for this reason. Guam should have the same rights of every citizen in this nation and not be forced to arbitrate. It is not right to pressure the legislature to continue forcing a mandate that does harm to the people. Arbitration should only be implemented by consent of both parties. The Triple MA was made for the advantage of a few, while it opens the door for people to suffer from repeated errors that never get back to life. Forced arbitration leads to no open accountability. What fosters a toxic environment is when bad healthcare providers are not held accountable. For example, back in 2018, two whistleblower doctors who spoke up against the status quo were met with retaliation and even ousted, where one of them claimed that a Guam hospital was dysfunctional on all levels and being run by a small group of physicians in a regressive and out-of-date manner. The other doctor also stated that much progress could be made if we ended a few old practices and inefficiencies, and that the bleeding must be stopped before we could continue, before we continue to pour the community's precious blood. This is the reality of the politics that go on in the healthcare industry, where doctors who speak up for what is right are instead reprimanded and even bullied out of their practice on island. We need more doctors who are willing to speak out about the wrong that goes on. If we do not talk about the bad or the mistakes or the medical errors, how is there room for improvement? If we continue to hide something as real as malpractice with forced arbitration? For the past 30 years, no actual data can be provided on these cases because they are swept under the rug. It is a roadblock for justice. Victims and their families often suffer in silence while these medical errors are not being addressed, risking lives and patient safety. For example, CMS finds GMH failures and two deaths in September 2020. And in May 2018, the joint commission cited 40 issues and procedures, procedures were found to be out of compliance. My point is that if these things are happening at a public hospital, what more would a private hospital? A private hospital is not publicly held accountable for any of the errors they do when access to recourse is being blocked. You are left helpless. A recent study released by the New England Journal of Medicine found that only 1% of doctors committed 32% of malpractice in the U.S. The question is, how do we identify that percentage on Guam and protect good doctors? Bill 112 does just that. It does not remove arbitration by giving the patient the right to consent. Not only that, but this bill is a confidential pre-trial screening bill, which still makes it hard for frivolous claims to make it pass the screening, which I'd assume they look at the evidence, medical records, documentations, and insurance statements first. So, why are the people of Guam and senators being threatened? It is frightening that the healthcare industry has been too comfortable in casting aside actual victims of malpractice, just for the luxury of being protected by forced arbitration. This is not about the mass filing of lawsuits. This is about identifying that small percentage, to restoring victims' right to access the courts. Heroes are not entitled to special protections, especially in the medical field. Because what if...
Ms. Lagrimas, your time is up. Can you please conclude?
Yes. To say that Bill 112 will close clinics is not true. In recent news, Labby Cancer Care Clinic announced that they were closing its doors because patients chose to be seen off island despite having the same services available. Many healthcare insurances cover off island treatment, something that did not happen thirty years ago.
Thank you. Ms. Lagrimas, thank you very much. And we have your... You may submit your written testimony. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Mansfield, Jim Mansfield.
And senators, for allowing me to give testimony and support of Bill 112. I'm here today to show my sincere support for this long overdue bill. I call it the Guam Healthcare Accountability Bill that will not only finally reform healthcare on Guam, but will save lives in the process and hold healthcare providers here accountable for once. Let's face it. The healthcare system on Guam is broken because for decades, victims like myself have had no legal recourse or right to due process concerning medical negligence. I'm a veteran, a statistic, and a case study of this broken and sick health system on Guam. I am not a weed because I want legal justice. So I was insulted by the arrogance last week of Maria Chella Marariano, who gave testimony. I think she should apologize to all the victims on Guam that were killed or injured by medical negligence. The patient as a weed statement by her last week is an example of a lack of compassion and empathy and why the people of Guam finally deserve the same rights and protections that the rest of the country take for granted. We will not be intimidated. We will not be threatened by this unethical and unprofessional behavior anymore. Bill 112 will hold the whole healthcare industry to higher standards here and will reform the entire broken and sick system. This is just a start, but a mandatory start in the right direction for the people of Guam. The people have spoken and have demanded Bill 112. We will not compromise on this bill since the white coats here have had decades to meet us at the table but have stubbornly refused to work on solutions. So their boat has sailed. Frankly speaking, the people of Guam deserve the safeguards, respect, and dignity that this bill provides. But the actions of these white coats has raised red flags by showing their true self-serving privilege interest while the poor, injured, and killed victims of medical negligence continue to suffer because of systematic medical negligence and a lack of legal rights and protections from the judicial system on Guam. These individuals have run wild on Guam for decades without any enforcement or oversight. So they need to have more accountability and ethics, and this bill will solve that problem. They are not diplomats and should not have diplomatic immunity from legal proceedings. We live in a democracy with a democratic legal system, but these white coats here feel like they are above the judicial system and the law. They have a sense of entitlement that is not fair or reasonable in 2021. Guam has been a safe haven and paradise for them for decades, and they have exploited the law to their advantage. Bottom line of their cash flow, it is a standard business practice to pay for medical insurance everywhere in the country, but not here. So that is why these individuals came here to set up shop. This is why all these traveling doctors and nurses fly in for a few months to make a quick buck without any legal or moral consequences. The white coats have failed to ethically respond... ethical responsibility and police themselves. So this is why this bill is so needed on Guam. The people of Guam should not have to go off island for medical treatment to Hawaii or the Philippines because they are so worried that they have no legal recourse if they are injured or killed. So that is why so many people on Guam, if they had a choice, would prefer to go off island for medical treatment since they know that they are legally protected in cases of medical negligence. The people of Guam have a right to the same protections that people on Hawaii have. So we can finally stop the GMH and get-me-to-Hawaii talk once and for all. And to the doctors that are unethically disturbingly threatening to withhold healthcare because they don't want to pay medical insurance. May I add, it's fully tax deductible like every doctor everywhere else pays. Then maybe you should leave and go to Hawaii to your other home in Hawaii since you have to pay it in Hawaii, too. The people of Guam will not be held hostage by fear from these unethical doctors anymore. The days of coming to Guam to needlessly pad hospital bills, avoid lawsuits, avoid medical insurance, and medical malpractice settlements are over. And maybe then you will all think twice before you do an unneeded medical procedure. And what makes this matter worse is the Guam Board of Medical Examiners is dysfunctional and does not even investigate due to so-called lack of investigation funds. So victims like myself have no other legal recourse. I filed a complaint with the Medical Board of Medical Examiners with Dr. Berg eighteen months ago, and it's still sitting on his desk collecting dust with the other thirty-three cases. And not one of them has even been investigated or been found to be negligent of any wrongdoing.
Mr. Mansfield, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear from Julia A. Sanchez. Ms. Sanchez, thank you for waiting. I know you were at the last hearing as well. Please proceed.
I'm sorry. My name is Julie A. Sanchez. I'm here for my husband that just passed away. It's really tough, really tough here in Guam due to the pandemic that we're going through and which we have a governor that is just strong enough. She's a woman, and she can handle it. You know, like, for now, when I just come in here, I just can feel the pain of everybody that's going through. I took my husband Saturday for his appointment at US Reno Care. I'm just gonna say a little short story. I'll be there. He's there for four hours. I'll be outside waiting for that four hours. So finally, my girls came to pick me up to go home and rest. I said, "I can't do this. I never left him alone." He was only there for six months for detox dialysis. So I kept hearing different stories. So I asked the doctor, you know, "How long this will take?" Because she told me six months. So I asked the nurses at US Reno Care, "Can I see the doctor?" This is what they told me. "He's in another clinic. He's with his business, building another US Reno Care." To what? To kill more people? Come on, man. We gotta do something. I'm for this Bill 112. I lost my husband because of that. They took him... They called the ambulance without my authority, without my consent. They took him, put him in an ambulance, take him to Guami Moro. Two years... Two hours later, they called me that he's at Guami Moro Hospital. Why? Why did they do that? When I called up the hospital, my husband, they put him on a Zoom. I took picture. My daughters took picture. They told me that... He even talked to me that he said, "Can you come up and take me out?" He's not a COVID patient. He's been tested so many times before he sees the doctor. He's not a COVID patient. They push him from one room to another room, three rooms. I had fears because he might catch COVID, too. So why can't they let me go see my husband? He's not a COVID patient. He was walking. I don't know what this doctor. I don't know. I'm trying to find him. I can't find him till now. So I got a lawyer. They're charging me another extra $2,000 to get an outside doctor. It's so incompetent for a doctor to get a patient in there and you're not around? When it wasn't COVID-19, all those time we were in there taking care of our own patient ourselves. I had a social worker at US Reno Care. She resigned. Two coworkers outside. I met outside somewhere, and they said they resigned from that place. I don't know why. They just saw me, and they saw me tearing because my husband don't have a fever. He doesn't have sore. So why? I've worked with the legislature for twelve years. I worked Guam behavioral. I've worked with patients. And I've seen some doctors come in there for what? Just it's all about the money? Come on. Money is a killer. It's death to the people here in Guam. My husband is a hard worker. I'll just say it one more time. He works for Guam Power. I met... They met him back into PI. He came back. He's walking, you know, six steps. They helped him. I had to spend so much money. I had to pay sixty grand out of Guami Moro. I kept paying, 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 paying for... He fell during working hours, and nobody helped me. I went to Department of Labor to seek for help. The lady there that worked, she said, "I fall on the stairs. You fall on the stairs. I don't come here for you. I come here to get documents to get going for my husband's accident that he had during working hours." I didn't get nothing at all. I used all my retirement money. And you, Senator... Amanda, you were there on my retirement. I had to draw my retirement to help my husband pay all his bills. Can't you imagine? That is so tough. And for a doctor to give... Do what he's gonna do without me knowing? How would you guys get hurt like that? They just take him without telling you if that's your husband? What are you gonna do? He's so incompetent. He tells his nurses or whoever what they're talking about, malpractice.
Ms. Sanchez, yeah. Five minutes are up.
This is all I'm gonna say. I got four things for this malpractice.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez.
The standard of care. That's one of it that I was looking through. Breach of...
Ms. Sanchez, I'm sorry, but your time is up. And so we will... We will... If you want to stay longer, we can accept you at the end to continue your testimony. Otherwise, I'm very sorry. And I'm very sorry for your loss and for what you've been through.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sullivan? Sullivan, you may proceed.
Good evening, Speaker and senators. For the record, my name is Pramila Sullivan. I'm resident of Guam since April 1988. I'm seventy-eight years old and resident of Thimoni. I have worked at the University of Guam, Department of Mental Health, Department of Education, and private sector. If you care to know my education, I have Bachelor of Science, Electronic Technology, Biomedical Electronics Degree, and an MBA, and a fast-track education degree. Senators, I'm here to speak for myself and myself only. Okay? I just want the senators to know that this Bill 112 is shameful. It is shameful because it will not help the people of Guam. It is a narrow sighted, and it hurts the very people you all are trying to help. I'm seventy years... Seventy-eight years old, and I'm here to let you know you must withdraw this bill. This is shame, shame, shame. Thank you. And I will leave you with that. One more. I cannot have a headache and anxiety just being in this room. If you would excuse me, I will have to leave because I don't want to have headache. I don't want to get sick. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Maria Espinoza. Is she available? No? Okay. All right. So that concludes the first panel. Again, senators, you are asked to keep your comments or your questions to two minutes, including the answers, beginning with Senator Perez. Senator Taitikui.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to use my two minutes to hear Ms. Santos provide something that she wanted to say. If you can... I'd like to yield my two minutes to Ms. Santos. She was talking about her standard of care.
Ms. Sanchez? You have two minutes.
You know, for my closing, I just want everybody to get together and work together. and work together. We need the truth here. We have a small island. Guam is so small. That's all I wanna know. Everybody should get together and work for our people here in Guam. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Nelson? Senator Nelson? Senator Shelton? Senator Brown?
Madam Speaker, I don't know. Are the panel members that are on the Zoom, are they still on? I wanted to ask Dr. Matras just one question if he's still on.
I was informed that Dr. Matras left the Zoom.
Okay, no problem. I'll ask another doctor if they come and testify. Thank you so much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Duñez?
Situ Smasim, Madam Chairman. I think I've heard enough information. I wanna thank this panel for coming. I'm just gonna continue to listen. And thank you for sharing your stories and your concern and your support or non-support for the bill, Situ Smasim.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Senator Sinagastin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank the panel for being here tonight. We're gonna, we're bound to find a solution to take care of everyone, regardless of what. We just take care of everybody. It's all about Guam. It's all about the people of Guam. Doctors, patients, everybody, because every one of us may be in their predicament. And from that, thank you for your testimony and I look forward to the other testimony that may come forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Senators Sinagastin. Senator Moilen? Just a minute, two more senators. Yes, Senator Moilen?
No questions. I do thank the panel for their testimonies as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Senator Ada?
No questions as well, Madam Speaker. Just to thank the panel for being here tonight to present their testimonies. Thank you, guys.
Thank you again to the panel, Situ Smasim. Sergeant of Arms, oh, thank you. Please make sure that they see the sign, okay? Before I cut them off, that they, so that they can accommodate. Thank you. Again, we ask, with all due respect, that you keep your testimony to five minutes, that you submit at any length of testimony that you would like in writing. Or if you would like to exceed five minutes, that you, you put yourself at the end of the panels that are testifying tonight so that the senators can stay as long as necessary without letting everybody else wait. Thank you. So first, we have Dr. Shea, you may begin.
Testing, testing. Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I just wanted to ask, before I start my five minutes, may I ask a question? Yeah, can I clarify? Why did the last hearing, other speakers have more than five minutes?
I wasn't as strict as the last, at the last hearing as I am being tonight because there were many, many complaints, including from you, about the length of the hearing. So we are trying to accommodate everyone tonight as much as we can. So please proceed, Mr. Shea, Dr. Shea.
All right, Madam Speaker. I'm the board certified OB-GYN and I completed my residency at Capilani. I'm a veteran. And I'm also an assistant clinical faculty at the Department of OB-GYN at Capilani Medical Center for Women and Children. I'm also the admission interviewer for University of Hawaii John A. Burns School of Medicine. I've been on Guam next month, making twenty-five years. I wanna give a little historical perspective. I came to Guam with the U.S. Navy on active duty orders. And I spent four years on active duty on Guam and then I got a call from Dr. Perez. This is Dr. Perez. I wanna make sure I hold up his picture. Twenty-one years ago, Dr. Perez was the one to tell me to stay on Guam. And he explained to me the mandatory arbitration act today. And that's why I'm here. Now, giving another historic perspective, Dr. Stadler also was a big supporter. Both Dr. Stadler and Dr. Chris Perez, if they were alive today, they would be here opposing this bill 11236. Now, the people of Guam today is very fortunate, Senators, of the twenty-first, because of the twenty-first Guam legislature who unanimously passed the arbitration law today. They were able to look into the future needs of our island and place into place a law to help develop the advances of medicine today for Guam. The current arbitration law dramatically improved access to health care and health care technology for all of Guam's people. Because it screens out the frivolous lawsuits, the meritless claims. Remember Guam used to have two clinics before this law was passed? Or two major clinics, I apologize for that. FHP and SDA. Now, we have Guam Surgery Center, we have Guam Regional Medical Center, we have two hospitals here, American Medical Center. I can go on and on. There's over forty new clinics that developed after the passes of this arbitration law. So this is the direct result of how vibrant Guam's health care system has been. Tourism is dependent on health care. A strong health care community is, will protect tourism. Without it, tourism will fail. Now, slide number one, please. Slide number one, you'll see, these are the pillars of the original passage of this law. Governor Carl Gutierrez, two-term governor, Governor, Lieutenant Governor Manon Bredalio, and former Congresswoman, Dr. Davis Shimizu, Elizabeth Areola, and on and on and on. So this is a law that did have foresight to bring Guam what it is today. Next slide. Guam is isolated. We can't just pick up and go. If you have an emergency, we gotta stay. The military depends on the vibrant health care system we have, the private sector. I've been there. I refer patients outside of the military. Without us, we'd be in deep trouble. Next slide. Passage 112, you're gonna lose two of the most critical specialists for women and children, Dr. Hirata and Dr. Torata. These are the two very specialists that will help us save lives. Next slide. This is a case with baby Ian. A baby with congenital heart defect. So you know, Senator, congenital heart defect for Guam is the number one heart defect in babies. Baby Ian served as inspiration to all of us. He lives, he's alive today because Dr. Hirata picked up his heart defect early. So we can transport him with his mom while he's inside the womb to save his life. Next slide. This is Dr. Hirata. Next slide. Can you play that video, please? Now, this video, you see baby Ian. This is an incredible kid that endured heart surgery and can still be on his feet a day after his open-heart surgery. We call him Sumo because he's big and strong. Look at him. Maybe the day after his open-heart surgery, he is up and walking, step by step, enduring the pain of a large scar in the middle of his chest. He championed every single step the day after surgery. This would not have happened. Ian would have been dead today if it was not for our specialists coming in. So passage 112, you're gonna stop us from saving lives. These are the future generations of children that you see above us. So I ask you, Senators, women and children are the most modern of population. These are the future generation. Passage 112 is gonna cause them more harm than you expect. Next slide. He's vibrant, he's running around today. Next slide. This is baby Mia and Leah. Mommy Newman. By the way, Speaker, Dr. Hirata can't be here today, so he yields his five minutes to me. He's on the second panel.
Please, now please conclude.
All right. Now, Mommy Newman was fortunate enough to see our specialist who detected twin-twin transfusion syndrome on Guam. That is so difficult to save. A twin baby who's doing well, if it weren't for Dr. Hirata coming in, the twins would have died and put the mom's life at jeopardy. But she's alive today with the two twins. Next slide.
Please conclude. Doctor, your time is up.
I'm gonna give you one minute, I'll be done.
Your time is up.
Next, next slide.
Doctor, your time is up.
Madam Speaker, Dr. Hirata is on the panel today. If you check the list, he's on the second panel. I'm here representing him. And he has yielded his five minutes to me to speak.
We're not doing that. That's, that's not what we're doing tonight, so.
Excuse me?
We're not doing that. We're not yielding time to another person on the panel, so.
No, Madam Speaker, I think that's inappropriate.
Dr. Shea, I, I-
You asked us, listen, you asked us to go ahead and speak.
I informed you earlier, with all due respect, that if you would like to exceed the five minutes, we are more than happy to listen to you. But we would just ask you to yield and we will hear you at the end. We will hear anyone who wants to go any longer, please. Please, we're done, thank you. Dr. Titanow, you are next. I want to work with you, yes. Dr. Titanow, please proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Can you hear me okay? You guys can hear me? Great. Hafaday, I am Dr. John Titanow, co-owner of the Doctors Clinic, president of the Guam Medical Society, past president of Guam Memorial Medical Staff, Chief of Staff, past president of Commission of Licenseur, and also past chairman of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. And I've been practicing medicine on Guam for over forty-one years. The old adage, "If it ain't broke, why fix it?" Should be considered here. The current arbitration act allows for patients and their families to bring their complaints and grievances before an arbitration board, consisting of an arbitrator, unbiased Guam physician in the medic, in the same medical specialty to review the complaint, grievance, and discuss the merits of the case and to determine if the case should proceed to the court system for a trial. This forum is available and is fair, and the discussion of the merits of the case could result in an equitable settlement, understanding, and avoid the expense and time of proceeding to a court trial. We are in support of funding for the Arbitration Act Monetary Fund. We have medical license fees to defray the cost of arbitration for patients who meet the federal poverty guidelines and unable to afford the cost of arbitration. Zoom technology today allows for an arbitration board to meet in a secure and private and HIPAA-compliant fashion with computer technology and obviate the need for airline travel, hotel accommodations, meals, and per-DM costs, and allows the arbitrator, unbiased Guam licensed physician and patient and attorney to remain in place through Zoom and to continue their other responsibilities when not in arbitration through a Zoom meeting. Bill 112 would negatively affect the delivery of quality health care in Guam by driving up the cost of health care with doctors ordering more unnecessary laboratory tests, exposing the patient to more radiation from X-ray tests and invasive medical procedures to practice defensive medicine. In anticipation of missing an esoteric and rare diagnosis, as the differential diagnosis can be as short as three to ten to twenty to over a hundred or more diagnoses, our Hippocratic oath, primum non nosheri, above all, do not harm, drives physicians and health care providers to provide quality care by remembering that patients always come first. And we treat each patient as family while maintaining social detachment to avoid emotional clouding of our judgment. Bill 1112 would cause an exodus of health care providers to retire early or leave Guam to avoid a litigious environment and further compounds the problem that Guam is already a physician shortage area. And Bill 1112 would also discourage our Guam medical students and residents in health care training to return to Guam to practice when the pay and technology is better and more advanced in the United States. We want to encourage our future health care workers to return to Guam and help our island home, not chase them away. Many years ago, when I was chairman of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners and president of Commission of Licenseur, we saw wisdom in requiring that all physicians applying for licensure in Guam must be board-eligible or board-certified by the American Board of Medical Specialties. This would ensure that all physicians applying for Guam for licensure would complete at least a three-year medical or surgical residency, not the one-year general practice program before obtaining a license in Guam, with the rationale that we wanted to raise the level of education and training required to practice medicine in our remote island location in the hopes that would translate to better health care delivery. Malpractice in Guam is already being addressed by the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. When I was chairman of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, we denied some applications because of reportable malpractice claims from the National Practitioner Bank and also revoked some Guam licenses for those physicians with flagrant malpractice events when reviewed by the board. Let the system that is already in place work the way it's supposed to. Again, the Guam Medical Society, Guam Memorial Hospital Association, the Guam Nurses Association, the Doctors Clinic, and many other clinics in Guam are totally opposed to Bill 112. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Titanow. Is it Robert or Rabania?
Good evening, Madam Speaker. This is my first ever. I'm sixty-five years old. I have an issue with American Medical Clinic in regards to a certified letter by the president. After a careful consideration, we have decided to terminate our physician-patient relationship effective immediately. What did I do wrong? I'm a Medicare member. Guaranteed eighty percent payment from Medicare when they present their bill for payment. My twenty percent? I will take care of it. To top it off, Kelly Neal is not a licensed medical doctor. She's a practicing nurse and she uses a rubber stamp over her alternate, Dr. Teen, who helped me. Why couldn't they transfer me to Dr. Teen? If Kelly Neal doesn't like me? I'm emotional right now. They are using our tomorrow cultural icon, the familia, the family? And they literally could do this to me? They have disgraced our ancestral culture by literally stopping providing medical care for me for what? Kelly Neal is not the only doctor there. To top it off, she uses a rubber stamp on her own car over her alternate, Dr. Teen, who is a good doctor. He helped me on one medication. Since 2016 December, I'm sharing my ordeal. December 2016, I was in ICU at the New Hospital. I was released December 27th. And for the first time in my life, I was establishing a primary doctor at FHP. I was emergency, taken to GMA because I was having a heart attack. My second. I was lucky to meet up with Dr. Alejandro Giamber Tolome, who saved my life in regards to my heart issue. Then again, the great doctors, I mean nurses, male and female, who helped in my recovery on the third ward for the adults on my situation. They helped me. And in September 2018, on the sixth time, because I have a problem with my digestive system, gas, and even when they prescribe medication worth $185 that I can't afford. And I go to the pharmacy because I needed, I had a hard time finding Ma-Lox, which helped me over the counter, which is only about eight bucks. I found another one compatible with a different name. Well, since 2018 to this present day, Madam Speaker, I'm a survivor and I have not been back in the hospital. And my problem is my control nurse Gladys. I went to cardiac arrest. I simply felt tired and fell asleep. Yes, I died. She brought me back. I didn't hear God's voice and didn't see the light. I was troubled. If I had a choice, I'd rather be in God's kingdom in heaven, in peace. But no. Is this the reason why I'm here? Well, then damn yes, I'm here to testify against crap doctors. I ain't seeing money cash. I have encountered two. And I got evidence here in a doctor and a specialist who came to visit me when I was in the unconscious stage. He got paid from Social Security. I didn't know. I got a bill for $85 by thirty percent. I refused to pay because I don't know who the hell he is. Never met him. Is this what doctors can do? This? Is the law protecting them or what? My first encounter with Dr. Fergur, he wanted to cut me open without even talking to my doctor, my heart doctor. You can't operate him, Mr. Cruz. You're gonna kill him on the operating table. Yes, my cardiologist is a good doctor. He's a rotator at GMA. Yes, my kidney doctor, Dr. Nervous, is a good doctor. Madam Speaker, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cruz.
May I step out, please?
Pardon, step out?
Yes.
Yes, you may.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, madam.
Mr. Troy Torres, you're right.
Madam Speaker and members of the committee, good evening. My name is Troy Torres. And I'm here to testify in support of Bill Number 112. I've listened to the testimony of many doctors and there just seems to be a common thread, which is they don't oppose giving equal access to the justice system to the poor and the middle class. And perhaps that's where a common ground can be found. And don't get me wrong, I support Bill 112 as it is. I, I hope it passes because I believe that there's a lot of misinformation and misinterpretation of what the bill does. But if the legislature wants to assuage the unfounded concerns of some of these doctors, then perhaps the issue can be looked at from the lens of the actual cost of arbitration. And I was just listening to what Dr. Titanow said and I thought that those were interesting thoughts about how to actually just reduce the actual cost of arbitration by doing things like Zoom meetings with an arbitration panel. Or what if the legislature explored the idea of creating a permanent arbitration panel on Guam with arbitrators who are not connected to the medical community as active practitioners or to the legal community as licensed lawyers on this island, et cetera? So just some ideas to consider. But what I really wanted to present was perspective. So I'm with Candid News. And one of the very first stories we ever did, we ever tried to champion, was this medical malpractice issue. And it started back in late 2018 when we met a grieving father. I'm sorry, early 2019 when I met a grieving father named David Lebowski, who about three months earlier, on October 31, 2018, woke up to his son, Asher Dean Lebowski, unresponsive. It was around seven in the morning on Halloween. He had just brought his son to the hospital on October 30th. And it has been such a journey. And thank you, Senators, for having this discussion with the community and the courage to do something like this. And if we could just remember why we're here today. And if we could just remember why we're here today, because we don't hear a lot of this, the doctors, many of the doctors have avoided this part of the conversation, and it's what started this whole thing. And don't take it from me, there's a report from the U.S. Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services that we managed to find because GMA didn't release this report to the public, which details what happened to Asher Dean Lebowski, and it's very painstaking. And I just want to read some excerpts from this report. It says that when the Medicaid team came here to audit Asher Dean Lebowski's death, they talked about him as a five-year-old child who arrived at the ER at eleven-thirty a.m. on October thirty with complaints of fever for two days, shortness of breath. He was evaluated by the medical doctor, and his physical assessment revealed he was ill appearing, not alert, not playful, not smiling, not well appearing, lethargic, dyspnea, nasal congestion, cough, on and on and on. He had viral pneumonia, bacteremia. They ruled out dengue fever. He had abnormal labs. They did a chest X-ray, and he had peribronchial opacities with viral infections. He had heavy growth streptococcus. He was received at three oh four p.m. that day by the pediatric nurse, who said that he was breathing easy, but had chest coarse breath sound congested, lips dry, pale, pink. Father at bedside was not on oxygen. At eleven forty-six p.m. that night, his fever had climbed to one oh two point eight. He was given Tylenol. During this entire time, no doctor came to him, to his side at Guam Memorial Hospital. And when, so it goes on to, he was irritable. He was hallucinating by six fifty a.m. His temperature was still at one oh two point eight. He was irritated and agitated. Three minutes later, the nurse checked him, and he was unresponsive with faint pulses. CPR initiated and code blue called at seven a.m. He was pulseless. At seven oh one a.m. is when a doctor came into the room. At seven fifteen a.m., patient asystole. At seven sixteen a.m., time of death called. In this report, it says very clearly that even in interviewing the nurses and the doctors, they said, they all said, what they did was right, that there was no problem with the care that Asher Dean Lebowski was provided, but Medicaid says otherwise, as they reviewed the hospital's own policies and found that the nurses and the doctors did not follow the hospital's own protocols in the care of Asher Dean Lebowski. And it's been three years, and David Lebowski has tried to go before the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, the nurse examiners, to get some justice, and nothing. This is about justice, Madam Speaker and members of the committee, and I hope that justice is served for the people of Guam.
Thank you very much, Mr. Torres. Ms. Quino Cruz? Quino Cruz? Is there a Quino Cruz? Okay. Dr. Lisa Nativedad?
Let me scroll through my testimony to fit your five-minute requirement. Buenos dias, honorable Speaker Talahe and all esteemed senators of this committee. I'm Dr. Lisa Linda Nativedad, a licensed clinical social worker, a licensed professional counselor, licensed marriage and family therapist, and a licensed mental health counselor. I'm a full professor at the University of Guam in the Division of Social Work, who has been a behavioral health provider in private practice for about twenty years. And so I make this testimony on behalf of myself as a private practitioner. Let it be clear that I stand in support of Bill one-twelve dash thirty-six, known as the Medical Malpractice Pre-Trial Screening Act, which intends to replace the current mandatory arbitrary arbitration process requiring an average of forty-five thousand dollars to bring forth allegations of my malpractice. I'm scrolling here to fit the five minutes, so please indulge me just for a second. Okay. When I first heard resistance to this bill, I was thoroughly confused. I was confused because I didn't understand why the medical community was painting an image of the collapse of their medical practices. I was confused because I know firsthand from my own experience that in order to be paneled by an insurance company, malpractice insurance is required as part of the application process. I am currently impaneled to the majority of insurance companies on island, and in the initial application, as well as every juncture of recidention, I am required to furnish the face sheet of my malpractice insurance policy. My current policy covers two million dollar liability limit per claim and four million dollar aggregate limit per year for claims as well. It also covers related expenses such as deposition and subpoena expenses and the cost for defense in the case of a state licensing board investigation. An allegation of malpractice does not constitute being found guilty of such a claim. The scenario of gloom and doom that is being painted is only applicable in the event that someone is found guilty of a claim, during which time one would be able to make a claim against their malpractice insurance. And so, yes, just like when you get into a car accident and it's your fault and your insurance cover company covers the damages, then your premium goes up. This is a natural consequence for your negligence as a driver. So why would it be any different for medical professionals? Why shouldn't they be held accountable and responsible for their work in their professional capacities? As a social work educator, professional competency is at the core of what we teach. The National Association of Social Workers, or NASW, defines six core values of social work, of which competence is one. The NASW Code of Ethics emphasizes the, quote, "ethical principle of competence as follows: Social workers practice within their areas of competence and develop and enhance their professional expertise," unquote. In the discussion of Bill one-twelve dash thirty-six, there have been threats made that people will have to go off island for specialty care. My question is, why is this not already happening? In line with the commitment to competency, practitioners should be able to reflect and only practice within their scope of competence. This is a very basic and standard rule in the healing arts. Why would a medical practitioner provide services that are not within their scope of training and expertise? Doing so would jeopardize and place the patient at great risk. Some might even argue that this practice is not only irresponsible and reckless, but unethical. I have had clients request that I provide specific therapeutic approaches that I have not received training in, and my response is typically, quote, "I'm sorry, but I don't have that training." So imagine if I were to say, okay, let me research it and do my best. Would you want to receive care under those circumstances? If our medical professionals are saying that this is a condition of practicing on Guam, then they are consciously taking on increased liability that is irresponsible, and that is a personal choice on their part that has the potential to harm their patients. A modern version of the Hippocratic Oath authored in nineteen sixty-four by Louise Lasagna from Tufts University States, and I quote, "I will not be ashamed to say I know not, nor will I fail to call in my colleagues when the skills of another are needed for a person's recovery," unquote. A summation of the Hippocratic Oath that is often referenced is the call to, quote, "do no harm." This rule of thumb has been adopted by other healing practitioners and reminds us all that if our interventions result in harming our patients, then leaving them alone is sometimes the most appropriate approach. And clearly, if you lack the training and expertise, there exists the potential to harm your patients. In closing, I applaud all co-sponsors of this bill for having the courage, the fortitude, and the vision to even the economic playing field for the most vulnerable members of our community. While there are specific details within the bill that could be negotiated, I implore you to stay resolutely committed to changing the framework of remedying medical malpractice on island to ensuring its accessibility to all. Your election by the people and for the people requires you now to make these hard decisions in the best interest of the collectivity of the people and not...
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Nativedad. Sit down, sit down. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Franklin Robert Perez.
Good evening, Honorable Chairperson Talahe, Speaker of the House and distinguished senators. I am a consumer of medical services, and I come before you to testify in support of this bill. Bill one-twelve thirty-six has been a contentious bill pitting medical professionals against consumers who rely on their professional expertise and skill to ensure that they survive any medical procedure. Oh, by the way, I see distinguished doctors bring their stethoscopes. I bring my three primary physicians. When going into surgery, I must decide if I should sign an informed consent form about the procedure that my doctor will be harmless from litigation. I would ask at this moment, what if I refuse? Will my doctor decide not to continue with the procedure? That puts both the doctor and I in an untenable dilemma. Nevertheless, I sign it anyway because I truly believe that the doctor is the good Lord's instrument, and no matter what the outcome, his will be done. I support Bill one-twelve thirty-six because it brings common sense into the equation of removing conflict or forcing doctors to support or not support their colleagues when such a bill like this is before, sorry, is before the legislature and the people of Guam. Common sense and logical reasoning goes against this arbitration law as it stands now. Any person, indigent or not, must come up with forty to sixty thousand dollars to present their case to a panel of doctors? Really? This bill will eliminate this well-established conflict by securing a completely neutral body in the form of a magistrate. With judicial experience, reviewing of established precedents, and judicial wisdom, ensure that equitable determination as to whether a litigant has standing. At the same time, this magistrate thoroughly studying the evidence, ensuring doctors under scrutiny do not suffer from frivolous suits. It is for this reason and for removing the burdensome financial requirement that, as it stands, penalizes a consumer, preventing pursuing redress for a real or perceived injury. This burden, Mr. David Lebowski carried with the death of his son. Thank the good Lord for using David Lebowski as an instrument of his mercy, giving Mr. Lebowski the persistence, the bravery, and fortitude to continue his quest, resulting in the drafting of this bill. And praise the Lord and thank God for the Candid News group, who is going, who has pursued this from the very beginning. And there will be a day of reckoning where the Candid Group, now he didn't pay me for this, by the way, will help our community in the long run. Thank the Lord that enlightened senators who drafted and supported this bill with the only intent of seeking to not only improve the standards of care that our people so richly deserve, but to allow, also allow for equitable redress. They do not deserve the vitriolic public tarring and feathering by the medical profession. It is imperative that this legislative body, under the leadership of Speaker Talahe, medical professionals, the legal community, insurance companies, and all who have a stake in the passion of this bill, find common ground based on common sense without conflict to work out a solution for the betterment of all involved. And I thank you for allowing me to provide this testimony.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perez. Next, we'll hear from John Bell. Attorney Bell.
Good evening. I apologize for multitasking here. I actually originally was not going to testify tonight because I had submitted written testimony, frankly, and it was hard to summarize what I wanted to say, frankly, in five minutes. I will try my best. I've been kept very busy, ironically, because of workers' comp reform issues, and frankly, I truly believe facing retaliation of my own, because I've spoken out on uncovering systemic issues like the Medical Malpractice Act and our workers' compensation system that essentially are designed to make sure that people never get their gain court. It's that simple. There's this part of the bill or the issue with medical malpractice, there is no other, it's easy to summarize. I'm sorry, but this truly is just about keeping people that don't have a lot of money, power, or influence from ever accessing justice. What's a little bit easier to, or not as easy possibly to explain is why I believe that this has something to do with workers' comp and the reform efforts that I've been working on that are similar to this. Perhaps the short version is that I strongly believe and allege, and I'm not here to smear anyone, but I've seen it a lot, is certain members of the medical community essentially participate in what I see as systemic workers' comp insurance fraud. You can have a valid claim sometimes, but the insurance carriers know that they can find a doctor to say anything that they want them to say. And so they will sometimes, keep in mind, the insurance companies pick the doctors with workers' comp. So you'll have an insurance company who's, that every single one of their doctors said this is a valid work injury, right? So what they'll do then is they'll just find a doctor who's willing to say it's not. And this is not how workers' comp is supposed to work, by the way, where it's presumed a work injury until proven otherwise. But the insurance company knows that if they can just get one doctor to sort of go along with this, then that provides enough apparent cover so that it's not obviously fraud, even though it is if you actually read the, you know, read the opinions and understand the system. And so the reason I think this is a big deal is because I just think it's funny that here we are talking about doctors not having, or all wanting their patients or their claimants to not have access to a hearing essentially. And it's funny because that's literally what I'm dealing with. I've been working on this workers' comp issue for nine years, and that's one of the big problems is the system is broken itself, but you have the doctors that are sort of lending credibility to this, frankly, insurance fraud, because there's a couple of doctors, there's really only a couple of them, I'm not making broad generalizations here, there's a couple who really will say anything for money, and so, and they just do it over and over and over again. They know exactly who to go to when they want the answer to be no for certain. And so I really want to explain the importance of that. And so I really am trying to skip over a lot of the stuff that I wanted to say because of the time. Like I said, I actually was not initially intending to testify alive. But basically, why is this such a concern and why is this near to me? Well, I've done workers' comp cases, obviously, I've done medical malpractice cases. I have a lot of people who come to me for a medical malpractice case, and I tell them upfront how it works. Because I know how the system works, I just tell them, I said, you know, I could review this file. It will take me a long time. I don't know what it will cost, but I will tell you this upfront. Our system as it stands today is basically set up that you, it costs tens of thousands of dollars in cost alone just to have a medical malpractice claim go forward. And so once they know that, they basically give up and go away, and that is exactly the point. That is why you have doctor after doctor, not all of them, and I really appreciate the ones speaking out that are saying, oh, yeah, the system, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, right? Oh, yeah, I bet. You know, it's great for insurance companies, it's great for doctors, not so great for the injured patients, not so great for the injured workers' comp claimants whose claim was denied solely because some hired gun doctor was willing to say anything in that report. And I'm talking, and this is fresh. I've just barely slept for a couple of weeks now because I just did a workers' compensation hearing for an injured worker, young guy with a bad back. Eight years, eight years after being run in circles by insurance companies, a corrupt workers' compensation system, and insurance fraud, you know, they basically, they knew that they didn't really have a good reason to deny him, so what they did is they just shopped around and they went to their, you know, their trusty hired gun and just had this one hired gun doctor, you know, put something in the report that could kind of make it seem like he might not have the claim, right? And that was the basis for this guy getting no benefits at all. He got everything cut off. This was a young man who injured his back in a warehouse, you know, lifting heavy things, you know, common sense. And so I realize you're...
Mr. Bell. Yeah, I'm sorry, your time is up, Mr. Bell.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Santes.
Good evening, Speaker Talahe. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I too am going to try to speed read and get through all of this, all dispense with the niceties. I wasn't, I also was not going to testify, but I watched the last hearings and some of the testimony and some of the responses from the senators got me motivated to come and testify. Ken Leon Guerrero made a whole bunch of unsupported conjecture... Ken Leon Guerrero made a whole bunch of unsupported conjecture and he said, you know, I'll just go point by point, he said confident doctors need not fear 112. I used to work with doctors, with, I was also the advisor of Major General Tracy Arturo Luhon Smith, the first female brigadier general of Tomoral descent. She was here not too long ago. Anyways, I worked with hundreds of doctors in the 807th Medical Command and majority of them are private practitioners. Anyways, that's just oversimplified. And he offered no support for that, okay? He said that in his personal experience, he went undiagnosed for so many years by the best and the brightest and then he came to Guam and he got diagnosed. Well, I wonder why that is? So that testimony actually supports the fact that the mandatory Medical Arbitration Act, which fostered a greater medical community on Guam, actually, he benefited from that. Then he compared medical care to mechanics. That's a very inappropriate and absurd analogy. When your car breaks down, you can go get another car or rent a car. We're talking about your health here, okay? So again, he said that there was no legal recourse in the medical field. That's just not true. There is legal recourse, but the problem is that it's difficult and that's what the issue is, is what we're here to try to solve, right? He also said he read 112 and sees that it accomplishes a major policy goal. He didn't offer how. He incorrectly characterized that the medical community is shielded and that it does not eliminate arbitration. Madam Speaker, with all due respect, your breakdown that you showed tonight is a little bit deceptive because as I read the law or the proposed law, the very first part talks about the magistrate, but in your presentation, it kind of puts the magistrate towards the end. And my main issue tonight is about the magistrate and I'll get to that. But, so it kind of makes it look in the presentation that, you know, last ditch effort, we go to the magistrate. Truthfully, nobody's going to want to choose arbitration over the magistrate. So you got to look at the way the law will function, all right? So he said, Bill, the bill is good for doctors and protects them from frivolous lawsuits. We've already seen, this bill's not even law, it's already causing negative effects, all right? It reminds me of a bunch of adages that we are all familiar with. Be careful what you ask for, you just might get it. We don't know what we got till it's gone. You know, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. Mr. Cruz's very emotional testimony. If you really look and listen to his testimony, it actually supports, again, just like Ken Leon Guerrero's testimony, that because of the MMAA or triple M double A, Guam has benefited from having a better medical community. And I'm here as, you know, I have two kids that were born recently, a two-year-old and a five-month-old, and they both needed specialist care during the pregnancy. And I thank God that they were here, the specialists, right? And they were here on rotational basis. You know, I too, like some of the other people who testified, I've been a public servant all my life and I left Guam so that I could get higher education so that I could come back and serve Guam. That was my purpose and intent. And I love Guam, but if anything should happen, should my kids need any medical care, I will move in a heartbeat, okay? We talk about the brain drain, we talk about, it's not just doctors that are going to leave, it's other people that are going to leave too, okay? He says Bill 112 will cost doctors nothing. As I said, I advise doctors. Doctors are very emotional people. It's like the stock market, right? They're going to do, they're going to make business decisions based on their emotions, okay? So Bill 112 is going to scare them away, for better or for worse, that's the result that's going to happen, okay? Dr. McNich.
Thank you, Mr. Santes.
I'll submit written testimony, but just to end this, Dr. McNich's testimony was, he didn't even read your bill, Your Honor, Mrs. Speaker, he didn't even read your bill and his shows.
Thank you, Mr. Santes. Next we have Dr. Robert Hildreth.
Good evening, Senators. I'm here to talk obviously about the Bill 11236 and I'm here as a veterinarian. I want to make that very clear to everyone who is listening and to all of you senators. I applaud you for making an attempt at a bill. You certainly knew in advance that this was going to be a tough issue with passionate and compelling arguments made on both sides. And with all of you standing in the crossfire, don't think that doesn't go unappreciated. However, in my opinion, at the heart of the issue here is public access to quality health care and in my case, accountability for the veterinary medical profession. Again, I want to stress that I'm talking about the veterinary medical profession only tonight and that my opinions are directed specifically about my own profession. I leave the human medical side to their own comments. Some parallels may be made, but I'm not an expert in human medicine, just like attorneys and judges are not experts in human nor veterinary medicine. Again, with veterinary medicine, we have, living here and working here on an island that is this remote, makes any profession difficult due to time and distance. Having supplies and technology to treat every medical condition is impossible and there are no local referrals to specialty institutions that are practical, especially when time is of the essence. Thus, we have little backup compared to the mainland when referrals for procedures, surgeries, and cases are commonplace. The chances of us ever having those resources are slim to none as our relatively small island population cannot support the employment of a variety of specialists. We do not have a single board-certified veterinary specialist on island in the veterinary community. And flying one in or sending pets off island is impractical. In fact, many breeds that are popular here on island are no longer allowed to fly even if the owners could afford to send them. Again, specifically to the veterinary profession and given the restraints mentioned above, animals by and large receive care here on Guam similar to most family practice clinics on the mainland. However, there are problems here on Guam for certain. Holding veterinarians accountable is an admirable goal, one that I strongly agree with. Obvious malpractice by fellow medical professionals in my field affects the perception of all of us in that field, even the good ones. The malpractice cases I have seen are truly gut-wrenching and would have resulted in severe repercussions from the state boards in any other state. However, here in Guam, owners are reluctant to file a complaint with the allied health board. They feel intimidated by potential consequences from the doctors themselves, feel that the board, quote, "wouldn't do anything anyway," and that the civil court is too expensive to pursue. Unfortunately, the allied health board has a history of not being able to enforce the veterinary laws that apply to my profession. In specific regards to this bill, putting a magistrate judge in charge of deciding what merits malpractice or not is like a doctor sitting on the State Bar Association and passing judgment on the defense attorney or prosecutor as to how they pursued a felony case. Again, a judge does not have the education or the experience to be able to pierce the finer details of medical cases. And for a magistrate to make a ruling on a case without an independent medical consultant reviewing the medical aspects of the case is entirely unacceptable. When a magistrate judge can do an emergency C-section at 2:00 in the morning without a full staff and no history to go by, then maybe their medical opinion could count for What is the solution for veterinary medicine? Well, first of all, this bill's not it. Pets are considered property, so from a legal issue alone, there are problems with the bill and even whether it would be applied to the veterinary profession to begin with. There's a $20,000 limit and I don't know of any dog that's worth 20 grand. There is a strong argument that has been backed up by several attorneys that I've talked to to remove veterinarians from this bill. Second, increased funding for this allied health board specifically aimed at supporting the review of complaints by owners, then determining if the complaints are actionable. An outreach to the community informing them that these complaints would be honestly and carefully reviewed, then acted on if appropriate would go a long way to satisfy owners and hold veterinarians accountable. The allied health board is staffed by a group of dedicated individuals and despite previous testimony, it includes a veterinarian since January of 2020. They all indeed want to make our island a better place for everyone. The good deeds of the board often go unnoticed or unrewarded. The board needs help and better laws to be able to enforce the goals of our community and funding. And finally, I just want to say that the key to much of this in the veterinary profession is detailed medical records. I've seen cases where there were over 100 pages of records and there are two entries by the doctor who did more than three surgeries and the patient spent over a month in the hospital. That is completely unacceptable. And how would you ever hold that veterinarian account if they don't put it in the chart? If it's not in the chart, most states say it didn't happen. So again, I thank you for your time and consideration this evening and I humbly offer my service to the senators in making any legislation with regards to veterinary medicine healthy for our island of Guam.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hildreth. I'd just like to clarify that the magistrate is going to have the expert witnesses available to him, just like arbitrators are going to have expert witnesses available to them, just like a jury if it went to trial is going to have expert witnesses available to them or a judge if it goes to trial. So the expert witnesses under all scenarios are supposed to be available to help in the decision-maker's decision. But I'm going to open, that's my only comment on what the panel has said and I'm going to allow Senator Perez, Senator Titikle? Senator Nelson? Senator Shelton? Senator Brown?
Madam Speaker, just to facilitate, I think we'll just wait to hear also additional testimony and I'm sure we proceed with the roundtable, we can get in the more specific questions that we would like to ask. But I appreciate the panel members for providing their testimony this evening.
Thank you. Senator Duennius? Senator Sonagston? Senator Moylan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Shea. We've heard tonight of the claims and we heard different costs discussed from 11,000 and up to 21,000 and just got a couple of questions for you basically. I would like some assistance in figuring out how we can make the, what is your recommendation basically for the affordability with the current system that we have? And the second question is, we've heard the need for more specialists on island and I would like to know your recommendation for the recruiting and the retention of these specialists on island to help the people of Guam. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. So your first question is stressing the affordability of arbitration, correct? And your second question is how can we help recruitment and retention of providers? Okay, so the first question, affordability. Now, as far as from my perspective, my dad is an attorney, my uncle is an attorney, so I grew up with, you know, a family of attorneys. If a case has merit, legitimate merit, my dad would take the case. So if you talk about arbitration costing 11,000 or maybe 20,000 for a case that's, you're asking for a claim of 11 million dollars or even 10 million dollars, that is a very good investment for the attorney to take under contingency plan. So if the case has merit, in my opinion, it should cost the client zero. If the case doesn't have merit, perhaps the attorney is not confident to take the case under contingency, but they want to charge him by the hour and that's where the fee comes in. Now, to decrease the fees, my solution is this. And I think some of my colleagues had met with Speaker over the weekend to produce some solutions. And I think she met with, I think Jolene Egan and some other doctors. But my solution is this for decreasing. Right now, AAA is the most affordable, I think, even Attorney Kill said AAA is the most affordable arbitrator, the professional arbitrators. The solution is two things. One, Zoom. We've learned, senators, you use Zoom all the time now. Thank the pandemic. The expert witnesses does not have to be flown into Guam anymore. They can zoom in to provide their expert testimonies. So that's one. That's decreased costs right there for hotels, air flights.
You have a few more seconds, Senator Moylan.
Yes, well, Speaker, I'm trying to provide a solution. I can't finish a solution in one or two minutes. Now, the second solution, now you threw me off on my solution, Speaker. If you don't interrupt me, maybe I can complete my thoughts. I'm trying to answer a question of Honorable Senator Moylan. Now, the second one is if you really care about the poor, first define the poor. How do you define the poor? If you, the definition of the poor is certain financial status, for example, the AAA process has a sliding scale. They also have a process in AAA to waive the fees or defer the fees if you can show financial hardship. So access is there. Now, for Guam, if you really want to help the poor, there's two ways of doing it. These are solutions I'm providing to senators, okay?
Yes, and I appreciate that.
One, yes, one, the poor, the poor, you can, the poor, you can go ahead and create a funding for them, a funding source, so they're part of money, just like MFP Medicaid, you're part of money they can access to, to help fund the arbitration. That's one way to do it, all right? I'll yield that. I'll come back to you finishing on my second.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Senator Ada.
Well, I didn't answer the recruitment retention. Do you want me to come back to that?
Senator Ada, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Mr. Santes, you were talking a little bit earlier about the brochure that was given here and I know Dr. Shea has spoken a little bit about arbitration. Within the timeline, can you please talk about the magistrate side there of the screening?
Yes, the good doctor here actually hit up or touched upon the point that I was going to make if I had more time, was that the reality, you know, the judiciary already answered a question, but that was just skimming the surface, the questions that was asked by the vice speaker. The reality is judges, even in dealing with regular legal questions that they deal with all the time, take six months to 12 months to come out with a decision and order. We're asking a magistrate who was kind of like a junior judge to do something impossible. You know, you wouldn't send a soldier out into the battlefield without any ammunition. That's basically what you're asking a magistrate to do and the timelines are just unrealistic, very unrealistic. There are other models that we can look at, you know, there's special referees, there's special masters, there's bankruptcy judges and immigration judges and patent court judges, those kind of judges are in the specialized field. You should come up with a creative solution, you know, I'm not here just to bash the bill, I'm here to offer some suggestions as well. There are creative solutions that we can come up with, but I'm just here to say that the magistrate is not it. It really isn't. That's the reality.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Madam Speaker, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Again, thank you to all of you on the panel for taking the time and presenting your testimony tonight. Cesar Smoski.
Madam Speaker, the second solution, if I could present it real quick, it'd take me less than 30 seconds, if you gave me 30 seconds. As far as the access to care for the poor goes, okay, the best thing you can do for the poor is not to tell them to sue their doctors, is to provide them with access to health care. That's the solution. To help us recruit and retain, 10 seconds. Help us recruit and retain, very good question. The way to help us is not pass Bill 112-36. Thank you. Thank you.
Mrs. Espinoza, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Good evening. My, my name is Maria Espinoza. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak in favor of Bill 112-36. It is a very, it's a very emotional process for me to come here. I'm not really sure I can finish. Anyway, on April 4, 2012, about 7:30 in the morning, I brought my very healthy 24-year-old son, Matthew, to the clinic, SDA clinic, for a comprehensive dental procedure under general In less than 45 minutes, he was dead on the reoperating table from a cardiac arrest. He was resuscitated, transported to GMH, and months later, on August 5, he was discharged, bedridden, with a tracheostomy from which he used to breathe from his neck, a feeding tube and a catheter. I took care of him for eight years and two months with my, with only my husband as the after-work self-mandated part-time caregiver until my son passed away one year ago, June 9, 2020. And this is what he looked like after he left the, the hospital. Frankly, senators, the thought of suing anyone was, was far from my plan of action. All the time, he was hospitalized and while I was at home, my priority was to be there for his comfort and reassurance that I, his mother, was there for him. You see, Matthew was not just a blind person, he was born without eyes. By the time he was 13 months old, he had a six-word vocabulary. How many of you can say that? But he became non-verbal, losing all those words by the time he was two years old. Before April 4, 2012, he was a healthy young man who needed dental work. As a person with developmental disability, he just could not sit through, not even a minor examination, and that's why we decided he had to go under general anesthesia. And now he was bedridden and required 27, 24/7 care. Matthew's simple joys were taken from him. He could not go out on Wednesday's with his stepdad, my husband, to Chamor Village to enjoy his shish kebab, a soda, and to dance to the live music. He couldn't go to McDonald's with us and he definitely could not enjoy the simple pleasure of going outside to swing for hours as he listened to Chamor music from his favorite radio station, 102.9. So what happened? First of all, I do not for one second imply that the physicians at SDA intentionally caused the injuries to my son. No, they didn't, I know that. They were good people. They sent him for a number of tests and numerous blood work and ascertained that he was healthy and able to withstand being under general anesthesia. They did everything right. He passed all those tests prior to the procedure, but on the day of the procedure, the process went downhill. This is the sequence of events. That morning, we were greeted by the anesthesiologists. We all discovered that I should have received a prescription medication to administer to Matthew two hours prior to bringing him to the clinic for the procedure.
Mrs. Espinoza, you have one more minute, just letting you know.
Really? I did not get the prescription for a pill that was intended to relax him. The other mistake was, and this, we found this out later when he was at GMH, she noticed that the oxygen was, the level was going down and she told us letter, later, that somebody must have accidentally dislodged the oxygen tube. Don't you think that that's worthy of getting a lawyer to represent you? And for what? Not for money. What I had to go through required a specific skill set from a nurse to teach me how to clean his feeding tube, not to freak out when it's oozing out with, with secretion, how to clean the trachea properly, how to, how to learn how to use all the machines to manage the time to schedule and to do all of this. I did get some help later, but all the suffering, I almost suffered a nervous breakdown the third day he was home. And I just hope that you will all find a solution. Everybody's going to have to give and take. The doctor's going to have to bend a little, the lawyer's going to have to bend a little. And I, I'm also thinking that maybe you could set aside some funds to the protection and advocacy, which is the legal arm of, for people with developmental disabilities. They were not able to help me whatsoever.
Thank you.
And thank you so much for the time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Espinoza, and for waiting in the last here, during the last hearing as well. Dr. Please turn on your microphone. Again, everyone has five minutes to testify. Senators will have two minutes to ask questions and obtain answers in the same two minutes.
Before I start first, could you pull up the slideshow? Okay, great. And, um, a little closer. Sure. Actually, as with Dr. Shea, I'll tell you that Colonel Dr. Michael Cruz had intended to speak tonight but is on a plane headed back and he has asked that I speak on his behalf. Are you going to deny him his ability to speak now?
You may speak on your own behalf unless you're reading his testimony? Please proceed. Please proceed, Dr. Byrd. You have five minutes.
He called me. He called, I'm asking you to not start the timer. I'm asking, I am speaking currently on, on behalf of Colonel Dr. Michael Cruz, who asked that I speak on his behalf. He's on an airplane, so he couldn't give me his written testimony.
He's not signed up to testify. Please proceed, Dr. Byrd. We will hear from Dr. Kees at another time.
Is that right? Okay, great. So, I'm asking you to listen, actually. And being able to listen means being able to be changed by the other person. Please don't be someone who is not always right but never wrong. When you introduce a bill like this, you can create havoc in this community. Guam can heal from what you have created. This bill has divided our society, you know that, we all see this, and it's already hurt all of us, all of us. And I'm asking you to stop defending yourself and listen. Just listen. Don't go and look on the media, look at all the, the posts, listen, right? Doctors aren't saying, no, don't do anything. We're saying this isn't the solution, but you attack us. Who says you should listen? If I was a doctor, a doctor, not a surgeon, patient comes to me with a very complex case and I have next to me my fellow who has very little training in this arena, and we go and see the doctor, and me, the non-surgeon, says, I think the patient goes to the operating room. And a surgeon comes to me and says, Dr. Byrd, stop! And I said, but I want to help the patient. And he says, stop, you don't know what you're doing. And I keep going. You'd say, have you lost your mind? I said, no, I made up my mind, this is what we're going to do. The chief of surgery tells me I'm wrong, I don't care. The, the nurse comes over and I say, I knew you were going to say that. You all say, that's ridiculous, don't do that, listen. Now, can you please open up my slides? Okay, I'll ask this not be taken out of my time.
Do you want the next slide?
Yes, please.
Next slide, please.
Lily Pasadis, a highly respected nurse who happens to be the administrator of Guam Medical Hospital, tells you this is very dangerous, says we have a very fragile healthcare system, said, don't do it. The woman sitting next to her, Jolene Uggan, tells you, it's, no, Lily, it's wrong, it's extremely fragile, so fragile, we had to call in the army to help us. That didn't happen in Hawaii. Call in the army. Next, please. Who told you? Chair of GBME? Me, who's asked you for funding and to let us autonomously hire investigators, you don't even show up at our meetings. You don't listen to me, you don't, you don't like me. President of the Guam Medical Association, you don't, you don't like him, you don't listen to him, he tells you this is very dangerous. President of Guam Medical Society, you heard Mr. John Tyte, Dr. John Tyte, who has 40 years' experience, telling you this is wrong. All four major insurance providers, I've never seen a letter signed by all four major insurance providers. You didn't even allow Dave Silva to speak. You all know who Dave Silva is, she didn't let him speak at the hearing. Administrator at GMH, you already said, no, I don't care. CEO of GRMC, Colonel Mike Cruz, you've devoted your life here, doesn't matter. By the way, I've been here 26 years, so I beat Dr. Shea by one year. Chief Justice of Supreme Court of Guam, he's the most highly respected juror on this island, you said, I knew he was going to say that. That's unbelievably disrespectful. Governor of Guam, who's a nurse, the most popular elected official ever in the history of Guam as a governor, and you don't even respond. Next, please. You're not listening to these people. This is what the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court, he's, are you saying, you impeach him? Pull him out? He says you're wrong. Next slide. Next slide. What does he say? I can't even read it. What he said is, you're wrong, we can't do it in the courts. You said it won't cost anybody anything, he's saying you're wrong, we can't do it. Next slide. Can't even read it. There, here, he says, we don't have the expertise, it's, it's too difficult for us to be doing this, it's going to take a long time. You tell, I heard, I knew you were going to say that. Listen to him, you should have met with him in advance if you knew he was going to say that. Next. Just like you should have met with me and Tom Shea and everybody else. Here, he says, it's not the solution. Okay? Keep going, please. Next slide. Finally, he says, you, you got the wrong thing, but if you want solutions, they're there. We are offering solutions. And at the end of this, I'll give you a solution. You were offered a solution over the weekend by Jolene Uggan, Erica Alfred, a bunch of physicians came and gave you a solution, you didn't even mention it. Here's a court, court case that you know of. David Lebowski is suing the SDA clinic a year ago, took it to trial. And what did the judge say? He said, it's not organic, it's too expensive, et cetera. Next, please. He says, the court says there's a good reason for this law. He says, there's a very good reason that this MMA exists. Next. If you let me finish, I'll get to the solution. He says it costs 11,000, but the, all of the fees can be deferred if you have financial problems. That 11,000, basically is all you got to do, because the rest is Zoom. He says, and by the way, you're suing the SDA clinic, a nonprofit organization, are you going to tell me it's not critical to the society? They'll go bankrupt. Mr. Lebowski and Robert Keo, and I'm sure Mr. Lebowski can attack me all over media, says it's 11 million dollars, he can't afford the 11,000 arbitration fees. 11 million. Next. I'm getting to the solutions here. And then the judge says, denied, it's all good. Next. Here is the solution. Okay. Here is the solution. One, mandate the doctor and patient meet. Many of these things can be solved at the lowest level. I've seen it happen, where they meet and they talk and the doctor gets a chance to explain what happened. Bad things happen, doctors need to meet, patients need to meet. Number two, if that doesn't work, you do mandatory mediation, enafa maulik. It's part of this society. What you're doing, dividing society, is exactly what we don't want. We want enafa maulik, where we can have people come together and arrive at the lowest possible solution. If that doesn't work, you go to binding arbitration. You must meet, arbitrators are not a panel of doctors, one doctor, one judge, and a third person that people agree upon. Next, we need appropriations to help us fund the people who can't afford to do this. That's my presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Byrd. Next is Michael Robinson.
How are they? Madam Speaker, Honorable Senators, I'm Michael Robinson, family physician, serving the island of Guam since 1998. I give this testimony as a private citizen and represent no entity. So just Massey, for the opportunity to give you oral testimony in opposition to the bill 112-36. I want to say condolence to Mrs. Espinoza. When the pandemic hit, many of us thought that we might die in the fight with COVID. When the governor asked us to join the fight in Tier Two clinics, many of us thought we would bring COVID home to our families and they might die as well. However, no one said, let's leave. We all said as a community, let's work together. I want to take this opportunity to thank the legislature for the support of the islandwide fight on the road to win the battle with the pandemic. The teamwork of the frontliners from all branches of society has been inspiring and the island has given us all a hero's welcome. Historically, our population has not fared as well with prior contagious scourges. High death tolls occurred with the Spanish Flu in 1918, it killed 780 Guamanian citizens. Smallpox epidemic of 1688 decimated the population, leaving about 5,000 persons on island. The current island's fight to win the battle against COVID has shown that our healthcare system is very vulnerable. We need to continue to work together as an island health system and to treat the vulnerabilities that are remaining. We have a great work that needs to be done for our island home and to provide a better healthcare system for the island. This cannot be done alone, we must all work as a team and row together. I want to thank the healthcare chair for providing these hearings. Let us remember the catalyst for these hearings, a dear little boy passed away, leaving a grieving father, a mother, a brother, and a family. His father has used his son's untimely death as a rallying cry to call attention to his case. I want to say to Mr. Lebowski, we are truly sorry for the loss of your son. We grieve with you and have shed tears with you. These tears have watered our souls on the island. They are intended to bring new life to our island. These tears are intended to bring constructive evaluation and improvement of the healthcare for the children of our island. These islandwide tears are not intended as a tool to destroy our health of our island, but to bring a better future for the healthcare of children, women, and our manomko on the island. These tears are for remembering and learning, they are not tears of revenge and not tears for the destruction of our healthcare system. We would like to applaud the honorable senators and the governor for the ongoing work that you are doing to bring about the creation of a new hospital on our island. This has inspired hope and faith among all of us as we can work together. I would suggest that our focus needs to be, how are we going to build a healthy healthcare system for the people of Guam? We all need highly qualified personnel to run this healthcare system, staff, management, high-quality hospital. I would suggest our topics of discussion should be, how do we increase our nursing capacity on island? Our physical therapy, our respiratory therapists, our nursing aides, our EMTs, our firefighters, our police cadets. We need a school of nurse practitioners, a physician assistants. We need a management level MBA school. We need radiation technologists and ultrasound technologists. We need rural family medicine and general surgery residency on island, OB-GYN residency. We need universal healthcare for our island. We need to establish funding for our most vulnerable, the women, the children, the manomko of our island. We need wellness activities supported where we can stop smoking and treat diabetes and coronary artery disease and gout. We need funding for additional mental health, high-quality mental health on the island. We need funding for Chief Medical Examiner's Office. We also need to have medical committee, like the Physicians Advisory Group, where we can discuss these on an ongoing basis and continue discuss these on an ongoing basis and continue to improve our island. We need help with solving the homeless on our island. As healthcare, we are trained to relieve suffering whenever it occurs. And in closing, medicine is not perfect. I believe we need protection from, for our patients. They need them, Mrs. Espinola needs them, Mr. Lebowski needs them, we all need them. Unfortunately, all outcomes are not ideal. And I also believe that we need protection for healthcare providers who provide care for patients. I would suggest that we need to defend, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Dr. Robinson. Next, we have Dr. Dolores Lee.
Test. Buenas noches, Madam Speaker, honorable members of the committee and the thirty-sixth Guam Legislature. Gua Hu si Dolores Antalan Lee, Hagan Stevens, and si Defunta Wonita Antalan Lee. I am a board-certified family medicine physician, and I was born and raised on Guam. My father came to Guam as an H2 worker from South Korea, and he naturalized to a US citizen and today considers himself Kumoru, Korean Chumoru. My mother was born during the war and was an infant when my family marched to the Menengan concentration camp. My grandmother, Defunta Delphina Antalan Kidigwa, rebuilt her family's life after the war in Assam. Having lived through so much, my grandmother instilled in us a strong sense of identity as Chumoru and gave us the gift of speaking Chumoru in our home. As such, my roots run deep in this land and in this community. Having grown up in a family with a dichotomous background, an immigrant father, and maternal figures who really instilled in us our identity, I feel that this has given me a unique perspective and experience that allows me to understand both sides of our population, those who were born on Guam and those who choose to make Guam their home. And this has been a gift to me as a physician, as I feel that it gives my patients a sense of ease and comfort, and it results in them being willing to freely discuss their thoughts, their opinions, and concerns. And senators, one of those concerns the patients have raised with me this past week has been Bill one-twelve. They are worried how it will affect them and their families. In hearing their concerns and their worries, I come before you today to advocate for my patients, just as I do every day in my clinical practice. Although Bill one-twelve seeks to address inequity, I am concerned that its unintended consequence will be a larger inequity. In seeking to screen claims through the judicial branch, any patient grievance will go straight to a contentious process that foregoes any peaceful resolution outside of the courts and potentially irrevocably destroys the therapeutic relationship between patient and provider. In pursuing screening of malpractice claims through the judiciary branch, the liability of practicing medicine on Guam increases. Both the malpractice and health insurance companies have advised this. It was stated in a letter addressed to the speaker and signed by all four medical insurance companies on island dated July seventh. This increased liability will result in increased costs of practice and health insurance, and this results in the larger inequity, as it will widen the gap between those who can afford care and those who cannot afford care. With the resulting loss of specialists and subspecialists and the consequent increased need for off-island referrals, the inequity that will exist will be those who can afford care off-island and those who cannot. Having grown up on Guam, I know all too well the difference between healthcare today and healthcare on Guam ten, twenty, thirty, and forty-plus years ago. I am my parents' rainbow baby. I was a preemie, a thirty-weeker, who would not have survived if not for the visiting neonatologist at GMH the week I was born. Imagine the devastation my parents would have felt for a second time if I was not fortunate enough to be born the week the specialist was visiting. I would not be here today, serving as a physician for my community, our people, our island. The timing of my birth was less fortuitous. Fast forward twenty to thirty-plus years and it's two thousand and seven, my mom was diagnosed with both colorectal and gastroesophageal cancer, two primary cancers, and she could not receive complete care here because radiation therapy was not available at that time. So we had to do what so many families have done. We took my mom off-island for care. I do not need to explain in detail the incredible emotional and financial burden associated with doing this, as this is something far too many families on Guam have had to experience firsthand. Fast forward to the present, now we have maternal fetal medicine which would have benefited my parents. We have more complete cancer care on Guam, including clinical trials for cancer on Guam, and this would have helped my mom and so many other patients with cancer back then. In the past five years, two or three, three of my close family members have had cancer, and two of the three were able to stay on island for the entirety of care. The growth of the island's healthcare capacity has been tremendous during my lifetime and has benefited so many patients and families, especially those who do not have the resources to seek care off-island. As I've stated earlier, I am concerned that the bill will take us back in time and result in the equity of those who receive, who can receive care because they can afford it, they can afford to go off-island, versus those who cannot receive care because they cannot
Sis Masi, Dr. Lee. Dr. Thorpe, Jonathan Thorpe.
Good evening, respected senators, Madam Speaker. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. I'm Dr. Jonathan Thorpe, and I want to give myself, just a brief introduction, as I'm a new resident here on the island. I grew up in Western Canada on a farm, and I'm the son of a father, a son, a brother, and I'm a father to two young boys and to a little daughter. I graduated medical school at Loma Linda University and did my internal medicine training at Johns Hopkins University on the East Coast. My wife and I had the intense desire to work in medically underserved areas following the completion of our training. And we, to that end, we moved to the country of Nepal, north of India, south of China, and spent for the last four years working and advocating for the poor in a rural hospital. And because of changes to government policy, we had to leave the country, and we could have very easily returned back to the Northwest earlier than we wanted to return and to take a salary many times higher than what I'm receiving here as a physician at the Guam SDA Clinic. We moved here purely because this is a federally designated health professional shortage area. And I came with my young family because I heard of the need for internal medicine physicians. The SDA clinic had spent for the last six years looking for an internist, and we could not find one. And we did not have to come, but I'm really thankful for the opportunity to be here, but I'm really fearful of this bill for the following reasons. Number one is the removal of the statute of limitations, and I'm sorry to say that, as referenced last week, this was the section one-one-three-zero-eight that was commented on as one reference to the statute of limitations, but one-one-three-zero-eight does not appear in the current bill as it stands. Section one-zero-one-one-zero says this chapter may apply to any claim that occurs before the date of the chapter becomes law at the election of any party. And frankly, this opens up a litany of historical claims that will never end going forward, and that's really, really fearful for me as an internist. Secondly, the concern that I have is the screening of magistrate judges. Most of my colleagues and I have spent between twelve and sixteen years post-high school refining the science and art of medicine. And the science of medicine is somewhat easy, it's the art of medicine that takes years and years to establish. And there's been a lot of discussion in the press about scope of practice, and I want to just clarify something. As an internist, if I was to do what Dr. Berg did or Dr. Weingarten does, then I would be practicing outside of my scope of practice, but technically treating gastroenterology diseases, rheumatological diseases is not out of my scope of practice. I have to stretch my practice because it's a subspecialty of medicine, and I am concerned that the bill, the way it stands, is that it will open up incredible risk for me because with the magistrate judge not having technical training in internal medicine or neurosurgery or radiology and having to rely on expert witnesses to make a decision without peers in the community doing this. And I recognize, Madam Speaker, that you did speak to the fact that we are peers, but I'm sorry, I don't see that happening in all practicality. When you get pro-litigious lawyers working to find every comma, semicolon, or period that could be misplaced to construe a different meeting that was intended with my medical decision-making at the time of it happening, I fear that I will not be judged by my co-internists in the community that are working here in Guam, but I will be judged by subspecialists on the mainland for the care that I've had to provide. Take, for example, the veteran that I treated this last week, or a few weeks ago, he or she came to my present clinic, Medicaid cannot afford to travel off-island, poor as can be, and needs to see a subspecialist, has no option to see one whatsoever. And technically within my scope of practice, practically much further than my scope of practice, and what am I doing? I'm trying my best to help that person, and I am fearful that my meager savings as an internist could be wiped out, and furthermore, I could, my reputation on every licensing board and hospital accreditation board, et cetera, will be completely wiped out. Thank you for the time, I know I'm out of time, but I appreciate the time this evening. I wish each of you best as you try to find a solution to move forward in this question that we face in the community.
Thank you very much, Dr. Thorpe. Ms. Haddad, Carla Haddad, Dr. Haddad.
Speaker, I ask to defer my time to the third hearing. I did prepare a testimony today, however, I don't believe I can get it out in five minutes. I would like to clarify something that was said false, a false statement on the record earlier. I was not available for the first panel. I did ask for accommodations for my child. I had to feed the baby, I didn't have him yet as I came straight from clinic. I asked my husband to drop him to me. I asked to switch positions in speaking order and panel with somebody else, and I was granted that. The previous person who testified did not test, did not read my testimony or testify for me, those were not my words. If your child is hungry, I'm going to feed him. Thank you very much, Speaker.
Thank you. So, does that conclude your testimony?
I just wanted to clarify that for the record, that's not my testimony.
Thank you, Dr. Haddad.
I'm gonna have to read fast, but I think I can get through this in five minutes. First, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. As I have read and listened to much of the public commentary on this bill, several misconceptions have emerged about the nature and consequence of medical malpractice, and I'd like to address some of those. The upfront costs to initiate a claim on Guam are indeed prohibitively high for many in our economically disadvantaged community. This is a very real problem which we in the medical community recognize, and I think that's why you've been hearing from many of my colleagues trying to come up with solutions. We recognize the problem, it deserves a real solution. We do not feel that this bill is that solution. The public seems to think that, and many people here seem to think that, as long as a physician has malpractice insurance, there is little to no consequence to losing a suit. They seem to think that insurance simply covers us and this is only a financial issue. This is simply not the case. Any malpractice case that results in a judgment award must be reported to the National Practitioner Data Bank. This represents a permanent stain on a provider's record. One of the issues that's been discussed here is cost, and the cost of arbitration is, of course, high. Many studies, however, at least in the mainland, have showed that the cost of jury trials vastly exceed the cost of arbitration to the tune of two to three times as much. Because jury trials are extremely expensive, insurance companies are more likely to want to settle small suits. Most malpractice insurance policies contain language that allows the insurer, excuse me, the insurer to settle the case even against the physician's will. For them, it's nothing more than a financial balance sheet. Is the trial going to cost more than the settlement? For us, it's a permanent scar on our record. Imagine, if you will, that you have been in a car accident. Imagine that you did nothing wrong, you were making a normal legal turn, but the pavement is maybe wet, maybe it's oily, the car slides out of control and you get in an accident. Imagine that the person who's driving the other vehicle is so mad that they accuse you of being drunk. Now, imagine that your insurance company says, you know what, we don't want to fight this, this is gonna be expensive to fight, we're just gonna settle this and declare you guilty. That is essentially what insurance companies are allowed to do in some of these medical malpractice cases. We could say that we are one hundred percent in the right and did nothing wrong, and they can say, well, we don't want to fight it, we're gonna settle it. Now, obviously drunk driving is a criminal case and medical malpractice is not, but imagine that there were some way to put that inappropriate guilt plea into your permanent record that would follow you for the rest of your life. When someone else doesn't give you the opportunity to fight that case and settles that, then that's like being declared a drunk driver without the chance to defend yourself for the rest of your life on every driver's license application, on every job application, on every insurance application. This has a profound effect on us, and the ability for insurance companies to settle against our will is significant, and that will happen more often with a more expensive jury trial. Now, one of the other things that I think is a significant misconception, it's come up several times in this testimony, is the idea that these trials only hurt bad doctors, only bad doctors get sued. And so, we shouldn't have to worry if we're good doctors and we're doing the right things for our patients. This is simply naive. In an American Medical Association survey of physicians of all ages and stages of their careers, two-thirds of all physicians, nearly seventy-seven percent of OB-GYNs and eighty-five percent of surgeons reported having been sued at least once. You cannot possibly imagine that these are all bad doctors. A two thousand and eleven study published in the New England Journal of Medicine found that ninety-nine percent of physicians in high-risk specialties, such as mine, neurosurgery, could expect to be sued by age sixty-five. Should be evident from this data that good doctors get sued quite frequently, particularly, thank you, particularly in high-risk specialties. Practicing on Guam is considerably more challenging than practicing on the mainland. This is a limited resource environment which significantly increases patient risk. We have inadequate tools and inadequate staff in many cases, particularly for high-risk subspecialty care. We know how to drive, but if you give us a car that has only three wheels, a cracked windshield, and no brakes, then we shouldn't be looking for more ways to hold us responsible. We should be looking for ways to provide us with a vehicle that works. That is not, however, to say that we physicians don't want to hold anyone responsible for malpractice. There seems to be some sort of conspiracy theory out in the community that doctors just want to protect each other regardless of quality. Nothing could be farther from the truth. We are all human and everyone makes mistakes, but bad doctors are a threat to all of us. Good doctors do not want bad doctors getting away with bad medicine. That presents a risk to our patients and it presents a liability risk to us. Co-management of patients in a multidisciplinary team is extremely common, and if a bad doctor hurts one of the patients under my care, then I'm not only upset that my patient was harmed, but I'm now a liability because I am now in the crosshairs of medical liability shotgun. We all want a solution to this, and we all want to be able to hold those who are guilty of malpractice responsible, but this is not the solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Weingarten.
Hafadee to the members of the Guam Legislature. My name is Dr. Sarah Clegg, and I am a dentist here on Guam. I'm here to provide my testimony in opposition of Bill one-one-two-dash-three-six, and I'm here not only on behalf of myself, but also as the president of the Guam Dental Society. The arguments in favor of the bill are saying that the new bill is about seeking justice by lowering cost. As a provider, we are all for addressing costs and helping truly wrong patients access justice, but we are also saying that Bill one-one-two-dash-three-six is the wrong solution to do this. This is not the justice you were looking for, because if this bill is passed, all patients will lose. The problem is that this new bill, in its attempt to address the cost, does not consider the serious unintended consequences that will occur as a result, where we will lose access to doctors and specialists and patients will die because of that. Whoever drafted this bill did not consult the medical, dental, and Whoever drafted this bill did not consult the medical, dental, and healthcare community at large, and it does not consider that we are swinging to an extreme to address this cost issue. We will open our island to the harmful domino effects because of the lack of protection against false lawsuits. Furthermore, this bill does not consider that our own judicial system does not have the expertise, nor the resources, to handle healthcare claims. This is not enhancing the screening process at all. Overall, this is really badly thought through. It is important for everybody to know that we do have a law that works, and that's the Medical Malpractice Mandatory Arbitration Act. This law allows the pursuit of real claims while deterring frivolous ones, and it is a necessary thing to protect our island's healthcare system. So why not work on a solution that lowers the cost of arbitration while keeping it intact? If justice and accountability is desired, why not allocate resources to give our professional boards tea to address complaints? It makes no sense to remove the protections of our current law when there are many potential solutions that can address the cost and access issue for legitimate claims. We can have it both ways if we work together. We do not have to sacrifice one protection to gain another, and our goal should be one in the same, a better Guam. I have to share that we, as patients, are lucky on Guam to have the access to the level of care we do, considering we're so far away from the mainland. I myself was born on Saipan, and I lived on Guam until I was five years old, where shortly thereafter, my family moved off-island, in one part due to the lack of access to healthcare my family needed on Guam. I had always wanted to return to the islands, and shortly after completing dental school, I had the opportunity to move to Saipan and practice there. In Saipan, I truly experienced the extreme levels of healthcare shortages, where patients had nowhere to go if the providers could not help them. Even traveling to Guam was too difficult and expensive for many. We had no oral surgeons to address oral cancer, no endodontists to save teeth, and this is only dentistry I'm talking about. Coming back to Guam and having practiced here for over five years, we have come a long way, and I truly appreciate the level of support that exists here, both as a patient and as a doctor. And even then, we are still far behind what we can access in the mainland. It would be awful to lose what little we have, and people will suffer and die if we do. Please, let's work together on real solutions for the cost, rather than ramming through a poorly designed bill. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Clegg. We'll now get questions from the panel. Senator Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This is to Dr. Berg. I thank you for some of the solutions that you proposed this evening. I just have a couple of questions. On the four points you gave us, you presented before the committee on the proposed solutions that you would provide. I just wanted to understand the first bullet you mentioned, doctor and patient meet. How do you see that as we would put it in statute, if that was an option? How do you see that unfolding in that retrospect?
Okay, thank you, Senator Nelson, for asking. So, I think, when you're looking at solutions, you always want to go to the lowest common denominator. Where is the place where it can least, where things can get solved? It came about because, as the chairman of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, this is about us policing ourselves. People would come in, and they'd present a claim. I'll make it up, okay? So, I'm thinking something that doesn't, didn't make any difference. Someone was getting their ear fixed, and the surgery looked awful after, right? They had a cancer, and they got it fixed, it looked awful. Making this up did not happen. And things very, very similar to this did happen. And they went to see the doctor and said, I'm really unhappy about this, and I went to Hawaii, and they said that this wasn't, surgery wasn't done correctly, and I had to have it fixed, right? So they went back to the doctor and said, I want to talk about it. The doctor didn't want to talk about them, they're afraid they're gonna sue them, and they may have inadvertently said, the doctor in Hawaii said it was malpractice, and I want to talk to you about it. Doctors got very frightened when they heard the real malpractice. So, he came and put in a complaint to the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. And when we met with him, I always tried to settle at the lowest level, and I said, sir, what is it that you are looking for? And he said, I want the doctor to talk to me, explain to me what happened. We did that. We asked the doctor, said, he just wants to talk to you, can you meet? They settled it. It's not the first and only time. So we're saying that you can mandate, that if a patient says, I want to make a complaint, that the first step is an opportunity for the doctor and the patient to sit down and talk.
So you're, it's almost like a step towards, similar to restorative justice?
Yes.
Okay.
That they have a chance, maybe there is something wrong, but maybe the doctor just needed to explain what he or she did.
Okay, understood. Thank you for that. On your bullet three, you put mandatory arbitration binding. What did you mean by that?
Well, it's something that can be discussed, and I'm asking that we stop, pull this bill, and we stop and meet. Having, okay, so we've been told that Guam has the most restrictive arbitration in the country, and that's simply not true. And I think the speaker knows this. She's heard of Kaiser Permanente. Everybody here has. Kaiser Permanente arguably has the most insured people in all of California. They have binding arbitration, mandatory. You don't go to court. You meet, and you have arbitrators to avoid going to court.
That is not correct, Dr. Berg.
It is.
In California, they have agreements where they will, if you agree with the patients to go to arbitration, then it will be mandatory.
Apparently, millions of people, pardon me for interrupting you, but millions of people sign up for Kaiser Permanente, knowing that they will go to binding arbitration, which means they meet and they settle in arbitration at the lowest level. That's just a proposal, Senator. I'm not saying, I'm saying this is a starting point. This bill's not a starting point. I'm saying we start by going through the lowest levels and move down, and that people do accept that at Kaiser. They don't challenge it. They say, we can settle in arbitration, and it works.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Berg.
Thank you.
We will look into that, the process, and get more clarity on that. And thank you, you know, to the doctors and all the members of the community for coming today to give testimony. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Shelton. Senator Brown. Senator Duaneus. Senator Sinagusti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank the panel for testifying tonight. The focus is finding a solution. One way or the other, there will be a solution. We've got to come to terms that both, not only the patient, but the medical, the medical community has to be protected, because I'm considered a patient today, you're all a patient today. We want to make sure we're all protected, all right? And thank you all. And I also thank, I wanted to thank the other panel that was here earlier. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Moynihan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For Dr. Jonathan, the letter that was provided from your clinic to the patients, that went out without this bill being passed, we're just in the public hearing state. Have you received some comments from your patients, and also, why did that letter go out at this point?
Thank you, Senator Moynihan. I'm just gonna repeat the question, make sure I understand it correctly. You're asking two questions. Number one, why did the letter go out? And secondly, have I received comments? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. So, I'll answer the second one. I have a number of patients who are some of the most highly complex patients that we serve there at SDA Clinic, and by and far, every patient who has received a letter that I've spoken to with understands and agrees with the letter that we sent out, because they understand that this bill opens up a unrestricted risk to us, and they understand that they will need to assume the expense of traveling off-island. They're not happy with it. I spoke with one patient on Sunday, and he or she was quite disturbed over the fact that the care that he was very pleased with, he was receiving here, the highly complex care that he'd received, would potentially be refused to him, and he'd have to travel off-island. So, by and far, by and large, the people who have responded have responded with appreciation and respect, because they understand this is not a solution for them. Secondly, you asked, why did we send the letter out? The reason we sent the letter out was purely as a risk management step. It's only fair to our patients to notify them, and I think if you had a patient, if you were a patient receiving highly complex care, that you would want to know if you need to start preparing for off-island travel. I have a patient who's fundraising literally by selling cookies and bake sales to try to get to Hawaii, and he or she needs to have adequate time to travel there, because this bill will change the way that we have to practice medicine to protect the clinic and to protect ourselves from the unrestricted risk that it opens up.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Ada.
No questions, Madam Chair, just to thank the panel for being here tonight with their testimony.
Thank you very much. In the interest of time, I too will waive my questions for now, and we'll move to the next panel. Dr. Prince, Dustin Prince, please proceed.
Honorable Madam Chair, Speaker Trelawney, and to all of our honorable senators.
Just a minute, just a minute. We need to turn on the microphone. Thank you.
Honorable Madam Chair, Speaker Trelawney, and to all of our honorable senators, thank you for this humbling opportunity to speak with you. By way of introduction, my name is Dustin Prince, and I'm currently serving as the president of the medical staff at Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. I was nominated and elected approximately two years ago. I come as a servant leader for my constituents, just as you all are, with your constituents, of which I am one. I do not just want to copy everybody else's thoughts in the medical community that have so eloquently testified already, but I do want to reiterate that I am also opposed to Bill 112-36, not only for myself, but also as a leader in my current capacity as medical staff president of GMHA, serving and speaking for the medical staff. Currently, the medical staff at GMHA rely on assistance from a variety of specialists from outside GMHA. Our community healthcare providers assist in treating many of our patients for that. We are so very grateful. Should Bill 112-36 be enacted, we understand that these specialists would either relocate or reduce the scope of their practice, and many would limit access to their outpatient clinics. This has already been presented in the aforementioned testimonies before me. There is increasing fear within our medical staff community that the net effect of Bill 112-36 will be to increase patient demand on GMHA as the provider of last resort, while at the same time depriving the island of the very specialists which it so dearly needs. On a more personal note, I want to reiterate what I believe others have said, and that there should be a task force in drafting a new bill and withdrawing this particular current bill. I am not ignorant to the fact that there are issues that need to be looked at, and more importantly, seek to improve at all levels of healthcare. I just humbly and gently implore you all to think about having input from all facets of your constituents that you serve as elected officials. There needs to be input from the government side, which includes the legislative and executive. There needs to be input from the patient's side. There needs to be input from the business side, which needs to include the insurance companies on the island. There needs to be input from the medical side, which includes not only the private physician, but also the government-employed physician, but also to not forget about our nurses, allied health, and other healthcare providers on the island. Lastly, there needs to be input from the law community and the judiciary on the island. I know that this list seems exhaustive, but with something so major as healthcare and patients' lives, for which we all are patients, we need to make sure we get this right. This is going to take sacrifices on each end to care for all on this great island. There will be humbling and soul-searching times in this journey, but as long as we stay focused on bettering the island, this can be done. This is what I strive for as a servant leader, as the medical staff president of GMHA, and I know that you also strive for this, as senators of this great island of Guam that we all call home. I understand that I am not the most eloquent of all speakers. I do appreciate the time that you have given me to give my input. I also appreciate the willingness to hear all of the public who are presenting. My prayers are definitely with this island and with your decisions. I do not always get this correct, but I do strive to make sure that I check my motives and make sure that my decisions are based on the betterment of who I serve as an elected leader, and to know that we are stronger together than we are alone. I know this is what you all strive for as well. Thank you for serving this great island we call home and for the bright futures ahead. Thank you humbly for this opportunity, Honorable Madam Chair, Speaker Trelawney, and to each of you honorable senators. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Prince. Suzanne Lobaton.
Hafadee, good evening, Senator Trelawney, and Senators of the 36th Guam Legislature. My name is Suzanne Lobaton. I am a registered nurse. I'm also the vice president of the Guam Nurses Association, and this evening, I am testifying on behalf of GNA, the Guam Nurses Association, in opposition to Bill 112-36. in opposition to Bill 112-36. GNA is the one strong collective voice of its members, and it has been for 70 years. Our mission is to promote, protect, and enhance nursing practice through education, advocacy, and collaboration and partnership. Nursing practice includes our duty and commitment to look out for the best interests of our patients and to do no harm. GNA agrees that healthcare workers should be held accountable for negligence and that patients should be able to seek justice without financial barriers through a fair and just process. This is why GNA supports medical malpractice reform. However, Bill 112 as written is not the solution. There are more than 1,700 nurses, including certified nursing assistants, licensed practical and vocational nurses, registered nurses, and advanced-practice-registered nurses, which include nurse practitioners, certified nurse midwives, certified registered nurse anesthetists, and clinical nurse specialists. All of us represent the largest group of healthcare professionals on Guam. Yet even as the largest group of healthcare professionals on island, we continue to face critical nursing workforce shortages. There are about four times as many nurses in the healthcare workforce than there are physicians, making nurses more likely to be named in malpractice lawsuits. Just this morning, the American Nurses Association released a statement that according to the National Practitioner Data Bank, nursing professionals were on average more than 62 times more likely to be involved in an adverse licensing action than in medical malpractice in 2019. And since 2015, the average licensed defense expense increased by 33% at $5,330. According to a recent Nurses Liability Exposure Claims Report, the average cost of a registered nurse's malpractice claim is nearly $202,000. Bill 112 will require each nurse to seek professional liability insurance, insurance that, to our knowledge, is not offered to individual nurses on Guam. As a result, nurses are left to continue practicing without individual liability insurance or be faced with an ethical dilemma of providing nursing care with scarce resources while increasing their liability risk. Over the past several years, Guam has seen an increase in APRNs, Advanced Practice Registered Nurses, who fill access to care gaps and improve patient health outcomes. To date, we have more than 20 APRNs practicing on Guam, with an increase in other nurses pursuing advanced practice. One of our local nurses recently completed advanced nursing practice in critical care, a specialty area direly needed on island. This is a significant milestone for the nursing profession, but this bill may only place restrictions to such advances. Nurses fill a variety of roles across all healthcare settings on island. We have five nurses who serve as administrators and CEOs in their workplace. They express concerns as Bill 112 increases their vulnerability to frivolous lawsuits. Nurses and our families are patients too. We are a part of this community. One of our nurses expresses concerns that Bill 112 will restrict access to specialty care for her child with an endocrine disorder. Guam does not have a pediatric endocrinologist. For this nurse and other community members in similar situations requiring specialty care, off-island travel for necessary treatment will be the only option they have. While GNA supports our patients and all members of the community to have access to legal avenues when pursuing justice of medical malpractice, Bill 112 as written will further burden the already fragile healthcare system. Replacing mandatory arbitration with a pretrial screening by one magistrate judge who does not have the education and specialized training is unfair for all parties. Even just one complaint that goes to trial is proven to be standard of care would still need to be submitted to a national data bank. One alternate solution could be convening a screening committee consisting of two or three of our professional licensed board members to determine negligence at the board level, instead of leaving it up to a magistrate judge. One screening committee member or another appropriate designee could fill a role of a patient navigator or advocate to help patients navigate the arbitration process. And for all this to be successful, GNA recognizes that they must be, our boards must be funded appropriately. We must also require our boards to do educational outreach to explain to them their roles and what malpractice is all about and its potential impact to access to care. We thank you for allowing us to testify in opposition to Bill 112. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lobaton. Dr. Wen.
Slide up, okay. Okay, my name is Dr. Huang Wen, and I'm here to testify against Bill 112. I served as Chief of Medical Staff at GMH two consecutive terms, and now I'm the president of the largest clinic, multi-specialty clinic, and primary care in Guam. And thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to speak for our patient. Bill 112 is detrimental to our island healthcare system and will set us back of any improvement in the past 20 years or more. I have been practicing Guam since 1995, and I consider this as my home, and I see remarkable difference in the access to care and the availability of specialists on the island before 1995 and the present time. I would talk on behalf of our practice at the American Medical Center and majority of our island provider. We are not here because we feel threatened by Bill 112. We're here to make sure that access to care for our patients continue to improve. We are not here to protect our business as Dr. Wong McNamie said in the radio last week. We are here again for our patient. Due to current proposed Bill 112, just like SDA, American Medical Center would close, would not close our door, but we will change our practice in a way to decrease any risk of claim or lawsuit. In the worst scenario, if we cannot afford or lose our malpractice insurance, we will be forced to close our door for sure. I can tell you that. This will affect about 46,000 active patients who are currently provided under our roof. Forty-six thousand patients. We have spoken to our malpractice carrier, and there's possibility of them withdraw our coverage due to Bill 112. The practice of medicine, as I told my patient, is a two-way street. It involves both the provider and the patient. Provider would do the best on treating the patient within the standard of care that's available in Guam because of lack of specialty. Provider and the patient relationship are very, very private. Despite the best care that we provide our patient, you all know, noncompliance with lifestyle, with medication, and follow-up visit will lead to bad outcome. Everyone in this room know that. We take the risk every day with our patient. Risks are increasing remarkably with the complexity of our patients who have multiple risk factors. Family members might bring claims to the provider without understanding or knowing the decision made between the provider and the patient. Again, we go through this every patient that we saw on a daily basis. Therefore, in order for the practice with Bill 112 in place, we will modify our practice by providing care to our patients who have the low complexity and refer our own to moderate to high-complex patients, which are about 20% of our practice, which are about 10,000 patients. With the physician shortage in Guam and the lack of specialty, thousands of patients will have to go off-island every three months for care if they can afford to travel. Otherwise, this patient will have problems with access to care and will end up in the hospital for admission. If that's what we want, that's not, I don't think that's what you want. I can go forever to tell you about the negative impact of healthcare in Guam due to Bill 112, but I will not bore you about this impact. One thing I can tell you that, you need to withdraw Bill 112 and sit down with the healthcare community in working with us in improving the healthcare for our people in multiple areas. We can work together to achieve a common goal that you set in this bill, improve the access of care, and at the same time, the quality of care in Guam. That's all I can say, so please, just like Dr. Burst say, listen, work with us. We are in the same team to take care of the patient. So don't write the bill without talking to the medical community because we do care for our patient. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Wen. Dr. Peter Lombard.
Hafadae, Speaker Tulahe, and members of the 36th Guam Legislature. Friends, I bring this message with peace and love in my heart. And to the victims of medical negligence, I am truly sorry for your losses and frustrations. My name is Peter Lombard. I am the owner of Lombard Health Eye Clinic. In my field, out of five Guam ophthalmologists, only two of us are board-certified. I'm the only ophthalmologist with privileges at GMH or GRMC. And with the recent departure of a retina specialist, we have no full-time subspecialists in ophthalmology in Guam. And these are the facts pertaining to eye care here. I have malpractice insurance, as do the other providers in my clinic, as do, I would venture, the majority of doctors in Guam, contrary to the prevailing sentiment. I've never had a claim against me, but statistics do tell us that one out of three doctors will be sued at some point in their career. There is a 2006 New England Journal of Medicine article in which medical experts reviewed a random sampling of nearly 1,500 closed malpractice claims from across the United States, and they found that over 30% were without merit. Notably, 66% were found to be with merit. This is significant, and that's why we're here today. But in one-third of closed claims, the defendant did absolutely nothing wrong. Yet the plaintiffs were convinced that they must have been negligent, which led to their bad outcome. So the odds of getting a meritless claim filed are perhaps higher than one may think. The notion that good doctors do not need to fear being sued, I think, is not true. Now, doctors are being painted as wanton killers, reckless, willfully malicious, and concerned only about money. I think this is rhetoric and disingenuous and counterproductive to our goals here. I would like to humbly clarify, because truth and data matters, there is an erroneous but popular statement that we see again and again that says medical errors are the third-leading cause of death in the United States. It's a number repeated in the media, but it's also demonstrably false. This was meticulously debunked in the British Medical Journal Quality and Safety in 2017. Medical errors are real, but this statement unfortunately is not, and it appears immune to being corrected. Medical negligence accounts for real and significant morbidity, but this statistic is false, and repeating it is misinformed. I believe Bill 112 also falls short of its goals for the following reasons. Number one, inadequate cost analysis. Is there a recent neutral-party cost analysis for the existing arbitration process to include hardship exemptions? It is possible that the costs related to this are in, reach the tens of thousands of dollars. If the only or primary problem with the arbitration process is the cost, then, and if we can expect seven claims per year for our population, this does not at all seem like a problem that would be too insurmountable to solve. Number two, a single magistrate ruling on these pretrial claims, to my knowledge, is without precedent. And in my research, I could not find a single example of a single, an example of a single individual making the final judgment, particularly an individual with no medical background. I think this is unfair to both sides. We owe it to the victims of malpractice and to the defendants of meritless claims, at the very least, a panel of three, with some element of medical experience. Number three, the bill is silent on caps on damages, which have been shown to reduce insurance premiums, increase physician supply, decrease defensive medicine practices. Many states include caps on damages, and this should be seriously considered. Number four, unclear statute of limitations. The bill suggests there's no statute of limitations. It is, of course, unreasonable to expect defendants to have maintained adequate evidence or even inaccurate recall-of-memory events as more time elapses. And of course, this is the basis for why these statutes exist. To conclude, I support holding providers accountable. I support helping victims of medical negligence find justice in an equitable system that would be as helpful to me as it would be for anyone. Like many of my colleagues, I am willing to admit the current Medical Malpractice Arbitration Act can be improved, but what I do not understand is why Bill 112's strongest supporters seem to believe it is the only way for victims to seek justice. These issues with Bill 112, with the single magistrate, no caps on damages, no clear statutes of limitations, are the most obvious and egregious elements that need to be addressed. Add to that a comprehensive and neutral cost analysis, so we all clearly know what we're dealing with. I'm sorry it has taken so long for us to be sufficiently engaged in this process. Please consider that we can find a solution that's better than the existing process and that's better than Bill 112. I am the offer of my services in finding this solution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Lombard, and I appreciate those offers of assistance and look forward to your testimony and writing as well. Dr. Leon Carrero.
Good evening, Speaker Tulahe, Senators. Thank you for this opportunity to speak before you. And Senator, I mean Speaker Tulahe, if you can thank your staff. You know, as we get older, we get forgetful. They called me up and reminded me that the meeting of today, so please give them my thanks. Much of what's been said, I mean, a lot of things have been said, and I probably won't add too much more to that, but what I would like to do is kind of give a different view of what happened on Guam. So first of all, I want to start off with by talking about medical care on Guam since I've been alive. I was born in 1955. At that time, there was two main avenues for treatment, one civilian, the other military. And at that time, people considered those that have military access the luckiest people when in regards to medical care. The civilian population had to go through GMH, Department of Public Health, SDA Clinic, and at the time, Catholic Medical Center. These were the avenues where you would seek care. 1973, Catholic Medical Center, Bishop Flores called in Dr. Gambiner to help run the clinics, and that's where NFHP was formed. Doctors were brought in mainly by these entities. However, in the late '70s, early '70s, late '70s, local physicians started coming through. You had Dr. Cruz, Dr. Duñez, Dr. Tyteno, the late Dr. Perez and his wife, Dr. Erickson, the late Dr. Baltista, and the late surgeon-slash-senator, Dr. Eduardo Cruz. But again, most people, most doctors were brought in by the two major clinics at that time. In the late '90s, early 2000s, more doctors were coming in, including specialists like nephrologists, radiologists, and cardiologists. A new hospital was built, who provided more specialty care. And this is not a new, coincidental that we had that 1999 Arbitration Act. Now, the military is actually sending patients to GMH to be taken care of. The second part of my discussion would be about my personal trip in this medical world. I graduated locally here at Father Duñez, went to St. Louis University for undergrad, graduated from University of Hawaii Medical School, and then completed my residency in general pediatrics at Loma Linda Medical Center. I had good training, and I'd like to think that I'm a good, if not excellent, pediatric, general pediatrics. However, when I came back to Guam, I did not just practice general pediatrics. Within a year, I was taking care of babies that were two pounds in a nursery that was not designed for intensive care with Dr. the late Dr. Staller, myself, Dr. Holmes, and some neonatologists from Hawaii. We started training the nurses in neonatology. I take care of people that have rheumatic heart disease that should be seen by a pediatric cardiologist. I take care of their problems with congestive heart failure. I presently see this one patient every week, just to monitor. General pediatrics does not, by standard of care in California, I wouldn't be doing this. I would be referring. I have also taken care of a leukemic within one, again, within one year of me coming back to Guam, where I had to do intratheco-methotrexate, bone marrow aspiration. I never did this in training. Intratheco-methotrexate is where I stick a needle in the boy's back, draw out some spinal fluid that covers the- fluid that covers the brain and the spinal cord, and then inject a toxic medication to help prevent the cancer, the leukemia, to spread it. Again, I was not trained. I never did this, but I was forced to do it because there was no other option. So when one, when one talks about standard of care, if we were to practice standard of care on this island, we wouldn't be taking care of a lot of these patients, and they would end up either severely ill or dying. My exposure to litigation, I had an internal friend, internal medicine friend, that got out of the practice of medicine because he was taking, he took care of a pregnant lady for four hours, got sued, and the lawyer at that time said, "Doc, don't, don't fight it. All the, all the jurors are going to take a look," is to see two kids without a mom, a husband without a wife, and they will judge mainly on emotion and not facts. We had a local orthopedist on Guam who came to service Guam. He took care of a patient, never paid, who crashed on his motorcycle. He was drunk, and it took him 10 to 12 hours to fix and try to repair his ankle. He was then sued for continuing pain. After that, he soon left the island, never to come back to practice. My experience with litigation is that I took care of a patient, asked several questions that the grandparent did not appreciate and demanded that I cease service and get another pediatrician, which I did in two hours. I then left off island for a conference, and when I came back, I bumped into a friend who at Hawaii who wanted to know and asked me a personal question. What is this social media where I have supposedly 16,000 hits of people asking for my blood? They wanted me to be, lose, lose my license, be taken to jail. And the reason for the, the problem, I asked the question, where, did you travel recently? And that was the, I was accused of being a racist at that time. It took me three weeks before I decided I should probably stay on Guam, because at that moment, I felt like I should leave. I hear I'm doing my best, I'm doing standard of care, get accused of being a racist, and everybody wants that I had. So in conclusion, I think Bill does not give us, the medical community, an opportunity or an environment for growth in healthcare to succeed and expand. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Leon Guerrero. Lilian Posadas.
Thank you, Speaker. Good evening, everybody. As a homegrown registered nurse with over 40 years of experience collectively here in Guam and in the U.S., it is with a deep and sincere concern that prompts me to express my objection, my perspectives regarding this proposed legislation called the Medical Practice Legislation. While I appreciate and understand the senators' desire to fulfill and satisfy the public's request for some type of justice, some relief and support to what they believe or perhaps perceive a negative healthcare medical outcome as an egregious medical malpractice experience, this bill does not help, does not improve, or solve the healthcare medical malpractice issue. Based on my years of experience as a registered nurse, the negative implications of this proposed legislation are as follows. It will weaken Guam's healthcare system, given our already limited healthcare professional resources, and more so in specialty resources such as cardiologists, cardiology services, critical care intensivists, endocrinology, particularly for the pediatric population, gastroenterology, amputation prevention, infectious disease, just to name a few. And with the recent COVID that we just experienced, all of us, a lot of us, did not know much about COVID, so we were just putting our heads together to take care of these patients. We took care of about 1,000-plus patients who came into the hospital with COVID infection. And even with the limited resources, we managed to take care of these patients, and we were successful in many of them. Unfortunately, due to some, due to factors and variables that were without, you know, without our control, we lost some of those patients. But, you know, again, the team of healthcare professionals, the doctors and the nurses, the therapists, came together to really just hone in and get these patients healed and go home after suffering COVID. Those of us in the healthcare industry have worked so intensely and tirelessly to recruit and retain healthcare professionals. The pioneers, such as what Dr. Robert Long Guerrero mentioned, Dr. Olivia Cruz, Dr. Eduardo Cruz, Dr. Staller, Dr. Chris Perez, they put their heads together and they worked to bring in more healthcare professionals, and they did. You know, I've worked in this hot, in this island for more, for many years, and I've seen how our healthcare system has grown, but it's still at a point where we still need more resources. So all that we have worked to bring Guam's healthcare system to this level will collapse with this bill. Doctors, nurses, pharmacists, physicians, assistants, physical therapists, psychologists, psychiatrists, psychiatrists, respiratory therapists, even nutritionists, clinical dieticians, these were all, these professions were all mentioned in this bill, defined as healthcare professionals. Many of them will leave, will not practice. Such as myself, I'm, I'm close to retiring. I may just retire and not, not be a part of the healthcare system. So this, this bill is really not going to help us at all. We're working towards building a new hospital because we all know that GMH, the current facility, needs to be replaced. In replacing that hospital with the new hospital and expanding the services, advancing the services, we need more healthcare professionals. So this bill, again, is not going to help us achieve that goal. Not only will we lose healthcare professionals, we will have a harder time recruiting these professionals, these healthcare professionals. When we start losing healthcare professionals, particularly those with specialty practice, patients who need these services will need to be referred off island. And we all know, and we've heard it already, that going off island is quite costly. And also keep in mind, the only airline, commercial airline that will air transport medical patients is the United Airlines. And if you're a stretcher patient, you need to have a nurse and a doctor escort, so that again adds to the cost. And there's no guarantee that United Airlines will approve that air transport on a stretcher case. All of these, all these can also lead to increased health insurance premiums. And the fifth, the fifth implication that I'm thinking, well, you know, the negative impact on, with this bill is that nurses and other healthcare professionals who work in this hospital, in the hospital, will get frustrated if physicians are not available to manage the medical treatment. With increased frustration, dissatisfaction, and limitations in the medical management of these hospitalized patients, nurses will leave the hospital. We've been battling with nursing shortage, and we're trying to get that resolved, just again, it's just not going to help us with that. It's just going to make it worse. Lastly, in terms of medical malpractice insurance, there is no such coverage for Guam nurses. The Vice President of GNA already mentioned that, and that really is just going to add again to the, to the, to the problem. So senators, thank you for giving me this opportunity, for hearing me, my perspectives, and my objections to this bill, not only as a registered nurse, but also in my role in needing the hospital and making sure that it's operational efficiently and safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Posadas. Dr. Dr. Lamstrm.
Half a day, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for reminding me. I'm vaccinated, but that's okay. Life is precious. Life is priceless. Life is without price. We are all imperfect. No one is perfect. We all strive to be perfect. I have lived and practiced as a surgeon on Guam for 31 years. I'm a combat veteran of Afghanistan, if a military. I'm currently practicing a private practice surgeon on Guam. I've historically served as the medical staff president, medical director at GMH, and chairman of the board of medical examiners. I do not support Bill 112-36 as written. That is not to say I am against reform. I am for reform. This is not the way to do it. Why am I against the bill? This bill does not prevent malpractice. It only deals with the consequences of malpractice. The civilian sector is being focused on because of a, of this bill, because of a tragic child's death at I feel for all those people that said things. I feel for all those, and I have great putty deep down when I listen to their stories. But there's so other, many other miracles at GMH too that no one talks about. Currently, this bill excludes and shields healthcare workers at GMH and other government of Guam healthcare facilities. Historically, GMH has failed, I said historically, just remember that, please, Lilian. Historically, GMH has failed in reporting settled malpractice cases as required by law from the assistant, from the Attorney General's office, when I was chairman of the Board of Medical Examiners, to appropriate healthcare licensing boards. Why is that important? Well, we can't practice medicine, can't be a nurse, can't be allied healthcare worker without a license. We need data. Do you know how many, how many malpractice cases are settled at GMH? Does anybody here know? Again, it's not, we got to treat the symptom, this bill does not treat the cause. We need to have information provided to the boards, medical licensing boards, be it doctors, nurses, whatever, because these boards are the gatekeepers of healthcare in Guam. And our mandate to maintain by this, by this, by this legislature and the government of Guam and the governor for safe medical care in Guam. You pay out your malpractice settlements at GMH with the people of Guam's taxpayer money. If these healthcare providers are provided information, they can't do their job unless they're given the information. We don't want to relicense physicians that are practicing outside the standard of care, who's have a history of one malpractice case after another, after another, lost their license in California, had to go to Mississippi, and ends up on Guam still practicing and still having malpractice. I was there when GMH, as a civilian private practice doctor, before we were blessed by neurosurgeons in Guam, come in, do a craniotomy on a patient to save their life, child, adult, they're living happily with their families today. I am not a neurosurgeon, but I cut their head open and removed a piece of skull to drain the blood. I was there when the guy got his penis thrown in the woods and put it back on, and it worked successfully. And just saying, the private sector supports GMH, and we do it for the people of Guam. Thank you very much, Suji Masai.
Suji Masai, Dr. Lamstrm. Reynold Lim, Dr. Lim.
Good evening, Honorable Senator Teresa Tulahe and Honorable Senators of the 36 Legislature. Good evening again. Thank you for allowing us to speak. I am testifying tonight personally on behalf of the staff, anesthesia staff of the Anesthesia Department of GMH. We consist of physician anesthetologists and certified registered nurse anesthetists. We voice our opposition to Bill 112-36 and urge you to take a more fruitful path to improving the healthcare for all people of Guam. As anesthetologists and nurse anesthetists, the GMH Anesthesia Department provides services that would otherwise be provided by specialists and subspecialists in our fields in major parts of the country. They are dedicated as children's hospitals, women's and infants hospitals, cancer center hospitals. We provide anesthesia and anesthesia-related procedures to all kinds of patients ranging from neonates, and basically that's like you're talking about 56 minutes old baby coming out that requires surgery, to the extreme of ages, 90s, even 100 years of ages. The extreme of ages and those with severity of diseases on island would be normally treated in specialty hospitals if they were on the mainland, and they are available 24 hours a day. We are not afforded that luxury here on Guam, and we can only do the best we can with our available resources. Yes, even in the field of anesthesia, there are subspecialists, and they are specialized in a training in pediatric, obstetrics, cardiothoracic, critical care, and pain medicine. In all 50 states and in DC, newborn babies and infants requiring anesthesia for major surgeries are routinely performed by pediatric anesthetologists. We, the general anesthetologists, don't even come near those patients. Because of the absence of these specialists, we are left to care for this high-risk patient here on Guam. And as an example of our scope, where in which we didn't, which is not part of our scope, we have provided a spinal injection of a chemotherapeutic drug, cancer-treating drug, in a young child, intraspinal. I've never done that before. It's never even part of my training. Yet, the pediatrician of the hospital, together with, I believe, the oncologists, asked us to do that because the child cannot go off island and really needed that medication. So by now attempting to pass a medical malpractice bill, it would make it easy for people to sue us, just because it's, you know, it's not even the scope of our practice. So I guess that in itself will be malpractice. We would all be reluctant to extend ourselves to treat for fear of losing what we worked so hard to attain. Altruism can go just so far before one needs to consider the risk to themselves and their families. People have commented that good physicians don't need to be worried about getting sued, but we all know this is just a fallacy. In terms of malpractice, basically, I believe there are already mechanisms that are already here on island, and they are used to evaluate complaints. We have the hospital peer review and also the professional licensure boards. I believe that we have to create or give support to this professional licensing board to conduct their business and to conduct their investigation. Guam's current mandatory malpractice arbitration basically may be considered too costly, but we believe that litigation will cost even more. Anesthetologists and nurse anesthetists are woefully understaffed on island for hospital services and as well as outpatient surgeries. Guam Memorial Hospital always suffers from understaffing. If Bill 112-36 is passed, I believe that we will even have a harder time recruiting physicians to come over, or providers, that is, to come over to Guam. We also ask that this legislature look at ways of recruiting more physicians, caregivers, and providing needing, much-needed equipment and materials to better take care for all of us here on Guam. of us here on Guam. We have seen great strides in the development of healthcare here on Guam. We draw Bill one-one-two right now and focus on us helping to continue making improvements in the healthcare for Guam. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lim. I think that's it for this panel, so I'm going to open it up to questions. Senator Perez, Senator Tyteno, Senator Nelson, Senator Shelton, Senator Brown, Senator...
Thank you very much, Mrs. Madam Speaker. Just a very short comment, because I know the evening's getting long, and there might be other individuals to testify. Um, I do appreciate, Dr. Lombard, your offer to, um, provide additional input, perhaps in shaping what we could look at as, as a common ground that we can come to. Uh, and at the same time, Dr. Landstrom, your comment with regards to perhaps a member of the medical profession that perhaps was negligent in their practice and yet perhaps never received the due process to ensure that if they weren't practicing properly, that perhaps they shouldn't be. As we sit and listen to this testimony, I understand the concerns that are raised by many of you. They're very legitimate concerns because it is your profession, it's what you do, and I don't doubt, you didn't pursue this to harm anyone. I don't think that was ever the intention. But I also don't want to think that as a member of the community, because we do have concerns raised by members of our community, that if there is a physician or member of the medical community that's practicing negligently, that we're supposed to let that slide because we fear losing the expertise that you bring to the table. So I think we are looking for that middle ground. If we're, we're going to proceed, we have to come with some solution. And I've heard some of them, not everyone's going to agree on all of them, but I think to do nothing either from our side of the aisle probably would be irresponsible to the community that we also represent. I think we're collectively here representing our respective community, which is the same community. I mean, I've, I've sat here for the last hearing last week in this, and I have doctors that I've been a patient of that have come forth to provide testimony. So I just think in moving forward, we need to look at that. I think the one that does settles a little bit, and there's, you know, a tax going on both sides. I mean, to hear my colleague does not, is not going to be able to receive continued care because she's a sponsor in this bill really doesn't set a good example of what we'd like to have and engage in this dialogue. Uh, but beyond dialogue, I think we need to come to common ground. There needs to be some recourse, and the intent is not to open up litigation that everyone's going to get sued. You could be sued now. It doesn't remove that. And we're not the only jurisdiction that wrestles with these issues. This is not unique to Guam. But I think you also need to understand, our public out there is concerned. I don't think it's simply just because of one case of a young boy. I think we all see that picture. We're very saddened by it. But that's not the only case of concern members of our community have. And so I am committed, I know our speakers committed, and members of the legislature that continue to sit here are committed to wanting to sit down and have further dialogue. And I know the speakers offered to do that. And I hope that you also collectively can make the time. I know you're all very busy, but I think we need to have that dialogue, because I don't think the status quo all around is going to be workable. But I, but I appreciate, appreciate your testimony, and thank you, and certainly look forward to dialoguing with you further. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Senator Brown, Senator Duñez, Senators Augustine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to thank the panel for being here tonight. I appreciate your testimony, and I do look forward in reviewing all your testimony and seeing where we can use it to, to, to be able to draft solutions to the issues at hand. Right? And thank you very much for, for your time tonight.
Senator Moylan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Lillian, as your physician at GMH there, and, uh, tonight I heard a couple of testimonies where I'd never done this procedure before. If this bill was law today and as your position today, and you've had these doctors performing these surgeries or procedures at GMH, which you are in charge of, and we know they have never done this procedure before, would it you, would it be your responsibility to prevent these procedures or to notify these doctors that these procedures are not acceptable or cannot be done? Would you be responsible?
It's really the practitioner, the doctor, the surgeon. If he says, or she says, I can't do this procedure because it's not within my scope of practice, then I respect that doctor's or that surgeon's decision. Because it is, you know, if he says that he's not comfortable, he's not trained, it's not within his or her scope of practice, then I respect that.
Actually, I'm wondering if they wish to proceed out of their scope, would you need to tell them you may want to reconsider?
If it's going to save the patient's life. If they think that that will save their patient's life, and they're willing to do it, they're willing to give it a try to save that patient, then I will support it.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Senator Ada, do you have any? Sorry. Excuse me. Okay, we're going to have to take a five-minute break to reset the, the audio technology here and the YouTube. So, um, thank you again to the panel. Sujamase.